Good evening and welcome to the Monday, December 10th, meeting of the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners. Will everyone join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'll make notice that we met. Everyone who see Commissioner Farhi, Commissioner Booker, Commissioner Clark, myself, Commissioner Abel, Commissioner Larkin, and Commissioner Nagel met in executive session just prior to this meeting where we discussed matters of personnel and legal issues. Before we get started, I would just like to first thank and congratulate Tammy Cohen and her staff, Heather, Tracy, and Lizette from the Department of Recreation and Community Programming for the wonderful Santa delivery, as well as thank the Public Works, the Radnor Police Department, Radnor Fire Company, Bryn Mawr Fire, Brumall Fire, and the Swedland Fire Companies, and as well as all the township staff that came out and supported it. It was a wonderful event.
And Berwyn.
Oh, Berwyn, I'm sorry. And Berwyn. Thank you, Commissioner Farhi. It was a wonderful event and really, I think, something that everyone in the township really treasures. I'd also like to offer congratulations to Susan Stern and Lydia Solomon, who were elected the leadership of the Radnor Township School Board last week. Consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to pull from the consent agenda?
Yes, I don't want to pull the item, but I just want to make sure that we've checked on the calendar for 2019 that we're not going to have any conflicts with religious holidays.
I'm going to be pulling that, so I'll pull it. We can discuss that.
You can pull it.
Okay. All right. So I am going to pull Item C. Is there anything that staff would like to pull? Is there anything that the community would like to pull off the consent agenda? All right, may I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, Items A through J minus Item C?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, Items A through J without my Item C?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven to nothing. Okay, so I pulled the meeting dates mainly. First, can we answer Commissioner Abel's question? I think, Jennifer, you had looked into all of those and made sure there were no conflicts with any of the religious holidays. Okay, great, thank you. And I just wanted to make note that, starting on January 14th, we will be meeting monthly as Board of Commissioners to talk about the budget. And we have some significant -- I'm sorry. We have some significant conversations to have. Would like to invite the community to engage with us on that, as well as the Carfac group. And we will be making some decisions as to what, you know, how we're going to move forward, what we're going to do with regards to setting priorities. And our first meeting will be January 14th. So, thank you, Jennifer, for scheduling all of these for us, and Bill White and Bob Zinkowski for making this happen. And we look forward to starting this work in January. So, thank you.
Well, on this point, as you raised it several times, what is the -- what are the goals? What is the schedule and what are the goals that we're attempting? So whether that's Bob or Jennifer, it's -- extra meetings, you know, with all due respect, I'm not really going to thank you for scheduling extra meetings for me.
That was my idea.
But if we're going to have these meetings, what's the end? We need to have goals and what our plan is to complete whatever work that you think is necessary?
Well, we can, I mean, we can cancel them if we don't have anything to talk about. Hopefully, that's not the case. It's on, right? And also, I think the focus, at least at the outset, is on capital projects because we seem to get to October and November, and all of a sudden, we start talking about capital projects and we don't have any money for them. So the hope is that we can somehow find a way to fund those things. I'm not sure how we're going to do that yet. We're not there, so.
So I think we have priorities that include sewer, stormwater, the emergency services, as well as capital. So we have, I think, some significant challenges that we need to start talking about, and I think we need to start talking about it in January so that we can work through these issues. We can engage with, you know, decide, do we want Carfac to do some of this legwork for us? You know, how do we engage the community on this? This impacts our community. So I think we need to, you know, I don't disagree with you, Commissioner Clark, and we can definitely cancel them if we don't need them. I think Commissioner Booker will set some of those priorities and agenda items in January.
Yeah, again, I just don't see what the difference will be if we can't decide. We have to decide, so I don't know why we don't just make the call. How many meetings are we scheduling? It says 12?
There's 12.
Do you have 12? 12 meetings?
Yep, one a month.
For instance, we had, so if I remember correctly, the second meeting in June lasted a whopping one hour, I think, and that, I think President Borowski was not there, and that had nothing to do with how I ran the meeting. We just had a light agenda. That would be a good meeting where, if it's a second meeting in June and we know it's light, we can put budget discussion on that and maybe cancel the extra -- you know, I mean, we can do this every month. We just need to, the point is, we think about it, and if we make everybody show up and talk about it, maybe, maybe we'll make some progress. And by the time we get into budget, real budget discussions in October, we already know where we're coming from. We're not just starting to think about it then. I think that's the point.
Would this be better if we did it through like a three-man committee as opposed to having everybody?
Finance committee is the board of the whole.
Is the board of the whole. But again, what I'm --
I don't support more committees.
What I'm hoping is that we have --
Less committees.
The more meeting, I mean, you're having a meeting.
I don't know why we need 12 meetings, why we can't have one or two extra meetings, and it seems like the meeting is to prioritize capital projects. So that would be the goal, prioritize capital projects.
One of them.
And why we need 12 meetings for that, I cannot fathom.
We can schedule, I think it's better to have them on the schedule. We can always cancel them. As Commissioner Clark said, we can utilize lighter agenda, you know, regular meetings, you know, and talk budget at those meetings. But I think it's good to have them on the, to have these meetings scheduled. I think that the community, if they want to engage, they know that we're doing this. We have some significant issues. We can't start talking about this in October when a budget is due in December. So. I would like to go ahead and I will make a motion to approve the 2019 meeting dates schedule. May I get a second?
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving the 2019 meeting dates, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes six to one, and your concerns have been duly noted, Commissioner Booker. We will try not to have any more meetings than necessary. All right, public participation. Please, I invite the public to come up and speak with to anything that is on the agenda or anything else of concern.
My name's Paul Pro and I'm Ward One. Good evening. And I'm here to object to the Board's increasing the property tax 6%. The Board's required to be financially responsible for our taxes. Our taxes are to maintain core and basic services, police, infrastructure, and maintenance. In order to do this, if revenues are falling short, non-essential services should be required to be cut back before any taxes are increased. All tax money given as donations and gifts to various township organizations, especially those outside the township, should be reviewed and suspended before any taxes are increased. It's irresponsible for the Board to take the township revenue, give it as gifts and donations in the tune of millions of dollars, and then expect to increase our taxes. The Board is spending millions of revenue dollars for non-core services. One example. I understand we gift the Wayne senior citizen approximately $45,000 a year, which is great. However, I was told the township donates $75,000 to Surrey Services for Seniors, which is not in Radnor Township. That should be an individual decision, not the township saying, "It's the residents' request. I didn't request them to get any funds." In the 2018 budget, Park and Recreation is allocated $1,774,000 to maintain the parks. That's not a core service. If we need stormwater, if we need sewer, if we need road maintenance, that's one thing. But to put $1,700,000 just to maintain parks is ridiculous. If our revenues are down, so is not to increase taxes, there should be a cutback as well as other depart, in this department, as well as other departments that are not core services. My other concern is the township gifted to Memorial Library $2.5 million. That's a gift. However, I was told an additional $1,651,000 was taken out of the general fund and given to the library. What was that about? Why was that done? That amounts to $4,150,000 to the library, and you want to increase our taxes? That's a 39% increase over the bond. And we have gifted to the library $800,000 to $900,000 a year since 2011. That amounts to over $6 million. That's almost $7 million. So in eight years, we've gifted to the library $11 million, and you're increasing my taxes for core services when you're giving $11 million away? That's not acceptable. That's just not acceptable. And I noticed in the 2019 budget, there's a proposal for $1,900,000, no, excuse me, there are a proposal for $199,000 for new trails. If we need stormwater, and we need sewers, and we need other revenues, why are you allocating or thinking of giving $199,000 for trails? So I'm really disgusted with this Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comment?
He's right. He's correct.
Do you want to come and speak at the podium?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Falcone.
I just wanted to, you had mentioned earlier, I wanted to say thank you to the manager, his staff, to Tammy, her staff, and to this Board, all the volunteers, the fire department, the police department, for allowing Santa to visit some homes this past weekend. He made a stop at my house, and three of my four children were very happy to see him. The fourth, not so much. But it makes it really wonderful to live here. I'm proud to be a resident of Radnor Township, and I'm really proud to raise my kids here. It's part of what makes Radnor special, so thank you, guys, for providing for that opportunity. Thank you, Bob, and your staff for allowing that to happen. It was a great night, I can tell you firsthand.
Thank you, Mr. Falcone. Any additional public comment? All right. Let's move on to, so we are going to be tabling the reappointments of various boards and commissions. We will be doing that at the next meeting, correct?
Yep.
We will, Commissioner Clark, you want to move on to appointments to various boards and commissions?
Sure.
And we also have number three announcements of boards and commissions vacancies. It's all right. I'll jump back to number three quickly. The Board of Health will have one vacancy as of January 1st, 2019. Carfac currently has five vacancies. The Citizens Communications Council has one vacancy. The Code Appeals Board has one immediate vacancy and another one for two total as of January 1st of 2019. The requirements for the vacancy as of January 1st, 2019 are master electrician, master plumber, or general contractor. The Environmental Advisory Council has one vacancy. The Planning Commission has one vacancy. The Radnor Haverford Marple Sewer Authority has one vacancy as of January 1st, 2019. Any questions on that? Commissioner Nagel is our RHM expert. The Stormwater Management Advisory Committee has three vacancies. The Willow's Park Preserve has one vacancy, and the zoning hearing board has one vacancy. It's the unexpired term through the end of 2020, so the appointed member would be on there for two years. So those are the current vacancies. We are going to fill the one vacancy right now. We interviewed various people for the Board of Health, and after all of the interviews, I am going to move for the appointment of Jane Karabasi to the Board of Health. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any Commissioner comment on that appointment? Any public comment on that appointment? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor of the appointment of Jane Karabasi to the Board of Health, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, passes seven to nothing. Thank you.
And will we be listing all those vacancies on the website as well? Great.
And I forgot to mention, if you're interested, you need to send a letter or an email, a letter, into our township manager, Bob Zinkowski, preferably with a copy to Jennifer DiStefano. And if you have a Commissioner that you know, or if you know which ward you're in, it's always a good idea to copy your Commissioner as well, so get you in for an interview. It's not a very hard interview. We take it easy on everybody. We love volunteers.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Moving on, finance and audit. Item A, ordinance 2018-18, adoption of the 2019 sanitary sewer rate. May I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. Mr. White, is this you?
I'll kick it off, sure. This is the ordinance that was introduced at the last board meeting. As we talked about at the last meeting, we filled in the blank in Section 3 with what the proposed rate would be for 2019. That has, that was set by the Board at $7.14 per thousand gallons of water used in 2018. That'll be billed in 2019. And this ordinance really is the culmination of all the discussions we've had during the budget process with regard to the sanitary sewer fund and its funding situation as it exists. So this really, this, what this will do is it'll set the rate for 2019. As we've talked about in the budget meetings, there'll still be an anticipated shortfall in that fund. It's going to depend on what the water usage is for this year, how big that shortfall is, and then rolling the dice a little bit with any breaks that may, or hopefully may not, happen in terms of capital projects. So this, we talked earlier about the need for the, or the, what the goals and the topics were for the special meetings. In addition to just general capital, the sanitary sewer program is definitely one that is probably best served having a meeting on its own night, just given the, all the different areas to discuss. And later on in tonight's agenda is the proposal to do the study of the infrastructure. So obviously, that's going to take some time to go through in a public meeting as well, so.
All right, very good. Is there any Commissioner comment on this?
Yeah, I would just note that we've, it's an old sewer system. It needs to be repaired. I don't think there's any dispute about that. We looked into the possibility of selling it, the, for various reasons. The appetite on the Board was not to sell it. So at this point, we need to address it, and unfortunately, that costs money. The sewer rent has not been raised for years. It was raised for the first time last year in many years, and in order to address it, we need to generate some funding for the sewers. So this is infrastructure. It has to be addressed, or we sell it to Aqua and lose control and experience rate increases which could be 200, 300%. And so we think, in our estimation, that this is probably the more affordable way to go for the residents, as much as it may not sound great, but it has to be done, it has to be addressed, and we think that allowing Aqua to pay or to buy it would create a far more, or a much higher increase in cost than what we are going to experience with the township taking it on and repairing it. So that's where we are.
Thank you. Any additional Commissioner comment on this?
No.
Please, Commissioner Booker.
Well, as Commissioner Clark noted, this actually is the second 10% increase consecutive years for the sewer rent, and, which is, again, is a massive increase over these two years. Moreover, the public, the Speaker that came from the public made the point, which was very well taken, which is, this is an infrastructure item, this is a basic service provided by the township, and this is exactly what we, as a township, should be providing. And that is something that we don't need to necessarily gouge the taxpayers for every instance of capital expenditures in the sanitary sewer system. What we need to do is maintain the system. We should smooth out our increases over time to provide the system at the lowest cost. And when we do have increases in the system, it is perfectly appropriate and legitimate to search for offsets and reductions in non-essential services, because this is an essential service. It's a health service, it's an essential service to those who are connected, and we should be looking to reduce expenditures in other areas, not simply pass along the cost to the constituents. And even if we are going to pass along the cost, it's unfair to constituents to increase taxes more than 2% or 3% per year, because large increases in taxes or fees are not usually met by increases in township residents' salaries, and therefore, it results in a real net loss of income and spending power to our constituents, especially those on fixed income. Two, 10% increases in, over two years, is too high, and I won't be supporting this.
Okay, thank you. Any additional Commissioner comment?
I also, I didn't, I didn't support the motion last meeting to increase by 10% for some of the same reasons that Commissioner Booker raises. Two 10% increases in a row, I think is too much for residents in the township on top of the 6% that we're doing on, that we'll approve later for the next motion. And I thought we had enough in reserves to handle potential breaks in the system this year. So I would have preferred that we, so I would, I thought we had enough to cover emergency breaks for next year. So I would have preferred not to raise it this year, really work the first quarter of next year to set the agenda, and if a raise was necessary next year, then we would, we would look at it then.
So the theory is that we would wait for emergency breaks and deal with them when they break? That's a horrible theory. That's horrible.
Well, that's, that's what we've done, but the other thing to note, the other thing to note is that we, let me just, one more item.
Rich, there are other commissioners that like to speak. Can you wait until they've had the opportunity to speak before you speak again?
Well, I did, and they didn't, nobody wanted to speak.
Because you didn't give the opportunity for anyone else to speak. Do you mind? Would you please hold your comment until Commissioner Booker?
I do mind, but that's why I asked for anybody to speak first.
To be fair, Commissioner Clark also made his second point about --
Exactly. The point, the point that, it goes with what Jake said. We have already borrowed $4.5 million for emergency and other sewer repairs that are either planned or in some stage of motion. So not only have we increased taxes over the past year, we have also borrowed $4.5 million on a bank loan, a 10-year loan, and that amount is going directly into the sewer fund and/or to the general fund to reimburse the township for emergency repairs. So we've addressed the issue with the sewers. We are going to do an assessment with, that's coming up later this evening, to try to get a handle on exactly where we think the sewer system is, and then we can plan and move forward from there. So again, I support what Commissioner Abel just stated, and we don't need to do a 10% increase at this point.
Well, I guess, I would ask this. What do you think the assessment's going to say? That it's in great condition and doesn't need any work?
No, but let's wait till we get that assessment.
Mr. White, Commissioner Nagel, please.
Yeah, first of all, I think it's very important that the public understand that the sewer fees and the sewer has to be fully funded by these rents. And also, I did a little research and found out that we have one of the lowest sewer rents around. So that's important you understand that. And indeed, the money these tax increases have gone for is emergency sewer repairs, which are much more expensive than if you plan a repair and do it properly. And we're borrowing money because, isn't that wiser? If I had to raise your taxes to cover that $4.5 million, what do you think the increase would be, rather than paying for a bond? You borrow money when you buy your house. This is a long-term investment, just like your home. So you, we borrowed the money to take care of those issues.
Mr. White, so we will not have, there is no, there is no reserves right now with the sewer fund, is there? So if we had an emergency break, where would we take those, that money from?
Well, right now, we're forecasted to end 2018 with roughly a million, well, $3 million in the fund. Half of that's going to be from the borrowing, with the other half reimbursing the general fund for the transfers it made for some of the projects. So we would have that cash balance to do any kind of projects with. We're, and again, I'm always careful because this is all dependent on water consumption. So if water consumption tracks the way it has historically, the 10% rate increase for 19 should generate roughly a half million dollars in revenue. We would still end next year with roughly a $2 million spending shortfall in the fund, so we would chew up all of that cash and basically end up slightly above zero.
That doesn't account for any emergency breaks that we might have to deal with.
Right, so that if we have an emergency break, we'll be relying on the general fund unless there's another, another method to generate funds for capital, which is, in mid-year, without the ability to adjust billing, it's going to have to come from some sort of borrowing.
And definitely, having to make emergency repairs are far more costly than, as Commissioner Nagel said, planned projects, things that we have time to find the best price for. We're not calling people at midnight to come out and stop sewage from flowing into creeks, which we've done.
Yeah, I mean, intuitively, yeah. When, when the pipe breaks on July 3rd at night, it's going to cost more to fix it on July 4th. The amounts are going to vary project by project, depending on the emergency, but if we're able to plan, plan for the capital replacement and bid it, chances are, we're going to get a better rate than if we call them the day it breaks.
Thank you.
Madam President, also, you know, just to put it in perspective, we have $15 million worth of sanitary sewer projects that have to be funded. So that's what we know of that are bad, totaling $15 million. And with Steve, that's a conservative estimate. We know we've got other major trunk lines, interceptor lines, that are in bad condition that could go at any time. We've been fortunate enough that when these lines have broken, they've either broken, and I say this with tongue-in-cheek, not fortunate, they've either gone in streets or they've run down in creeks or down streets. At one point, one of these are going to break, and guess where that sanitary sewage is going to go at? It's going in homes. And that's the concern and worry, that our system is in that bad a shape. You don't see it, you don't see where those dollars go, but it's there every time you turn on your faucet or you flush your toilet, and you hope that it's not coming anywhere else, but our system's in bad shape.
People on Midland Avenue hear it.
Absolutely.
Can I ask, they hear it.
Bill, can I ask you a question? Because it's coming from one pocket or another, is my understanding. Now, when you have a sewer fee and it's a fee, you're able to collect more money because then the nonprofits have to pay for it, correct? But I, my concern is that when, if we raise taxes to pay for it, it's just not an equitable divide, if that makes sense to you. Do you understand what I'm saying? Or I know it's a little choppy. Or I know it's a little choppy here, no?
If there was a question I missed on, I didn't hear it, yeah.
Okay, now, it's not worded, and I'll say this, it's not worded very well. We're gonna, we either pull money from the general fund or we pull money from the sewer rent. In your mind, where's, where do we get the best flexibility? We can get more money from a sewer rent fee because you can have more people, more entities pay for it. What it's done through the general fund, I guess, I feel that our hands are tied greater because it's, 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 we have less money coming, coming in.
Are you suggesting that the, everyone in the township is contributing to the sewer rent and not everybody is contributing to the taxes?
No, they are, they are contributing to the taxes. And I admit that, I am having a difficult time putting this into words. When you wind up paying, I guess when it's in the general fund, it's the taxpayers that pay for the interest if we float a bond on this, correct? If we put it in the sewer rent, in the sewer rent, then, then it's everybody that pays for it.
Well, the, the sewer rent fee, well, the sewer program, and it matches the users of the system to the maintenance and the upkeep and the cost of the system. So the fee is borne by the users of the system. The closest thing that we have to attach or to, to gauge that usage on is water consumption. So you have a much better match in a fee-based system than a tax-based system because taxes are based on an assessed value and paid by some, not paid by others, and are, might be based on an assessed value that's more than 20 years old. So I, it, you lose some of that equity, and it, it matches up better in a fee-based system. So to the extent we can operate the sewer rent, matching the, the fee with the costs of maintaining and keeping the system up and running, the better it's going to be for all the users of the system.
Now, when we pull money from the general fund, if we float a bond and we pull money from the general fund, it's the tax, it's a tax base that is paying for that debt service, correct? And you cannot use, if we had a surplus, if we had a surplus in the, if we ever did have a surplus in the sewer rent fund, could we essentially use that money to pay for the general, because we floated a bond in the general fund strictly for the sewer?
No. No, the sewer rent fee needs to pay for the debt service on the notes that are being issued.
That's where I kind of see that, it's because it's.
Sean, the sewer rent fund pays the service of the debt, not the general fund.
Okay.
Ideally speaking, if, if we were starting the system today and starting from scratch, that we would have enough in the sewer fund to, that the general fund would never have to contribute or help out the sewer fund at all. It would be financially stable on its own.
Okay, any other commissioner comment?
Just one, one more thing. It's a red herring about the emergency repairs. The, you cannot anticipate emergency repairs. Even if we set about a plan to replace the entire sewer system and borrow $50 million, we could still have emergency repairs that come up. It's, it's simply not something that we can anticipate. When there, when an emergency occurs, we deal with it as best as possible. We are going to do an assessment, and we are going to determine the most, the areas most in need of maintenance, and we should wait for that assessment. We've taken care of the near-term, the foreseeable issues with the sewer fund. Let's wait for the final analysis, let's prioritize, and then we can talk about how we take care of the needs of the sanitary sewer system. And again, even if the sanitary sewer system expenditures need to go up, that does not necessarily mean it needs to go into taxes or sewer rent fees for the, for the constituents. Reductions in costs otherwise can be made to offset that.
Okay, thank you. Any staff comment on this?
Yes, just, just to follow up on, you know, the emergency sewer breaks, we know that when you have a line that's broken, cracked, that's seeping, that needs to be replaced. I know Steve and myself were out on it, but Bill referenced July 3rd back a number of years ago. It was found that the township only did a repair up to a certain point, and they said, "We're not going to go ahead and fix the rest of the bad line." What happened is that bad line broke. So if it had been repaired years earlier, when that was being done by a contract, it would have been a lot less expensive to be able to do that. And the second point is if we operated this sanitary system like a utility, which should have cash reserves into it, the rate would be nowhere near where it is today. It would be much higher, and that's why we have struggled with this, because it is not, it's a, it's a decision not based in the operation, it's based in the politics. And I think that's where it goes back for years and years and years, is the rate needed to be adjusted, but it never was. And now we sit in a position where it's underfunded and we have major repairs to a system that will continue to break.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zankowski. Any other staff comment, public comment?
Sarah Belling, 29 Garrett Avenue. I've been coming to these meetings, I've missed very few since 1998, and none of you were on the board then. For years, and I didn't fully understand it then, but I understand it now, the money from the sewer fund was transferred to the general fund and never put back. And to quote one former commissioner, sewers don't vote. So that's the first thing. There was not the upkeep given that should have been given. The second thing is, we don't, all of us need to use the amount of water we use. Now, there's nothing I love more than a challenge. Yes, I live alone, but I have brought my sewer rent, which there was a big fight as to whether it was a tax or a rent that's immaterial, from $171 to a projected $86 this year. Bad news for the township because you're not going to get the rent. What I'm saving in the rent is going to pay for my increased taxes. But at 81 on a fixed income, that's what I have to do. But none of us need to use the amount of water. None of you need to be as extreme as I was. But it can be done. And I think we all need to use some sense in this, and we have to pay our fair share. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Any other public comment? All right, I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor of ordinance 2018-18, adoption of the 2019 sanitary sewer rate, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
May.
Motion passes five to two. Ordinance 2018-17, adoption of the final comprehensive budget for 2019, resetting township real estate tax millage rates and adopting appropriations for 2019. May I get a motion, please?
So moved?
Second.
All right. Mr. White.
Similar to the last ordinance, this ordinance will set the township's 2019 real estate tax millage. At the last meeting, when it was introduced, it had the blanks in it, the board at the time elected or directed that the amount put in for the, the operating millage be 3.9865 mils, which represents a 6% increase over what it had been for the last couple of years. In addition to that change to the ordinance, in section one, we also identified the different areas that were discussed and where board gave direction, which includes the, putting back the 2019 OPEB portion, or 2019 OPEB funding plan into the general fund expenses, as well as inclusion of $100,000 for the Radnor Fire Company, an additional $15,000 for the, the Wayne Senior Center, and then noting that no additional capital funding is included beyond the pay-as-you, the pay-as-you-go part of the capital plan. So for the, again, this, these discussions have been going on, we've had several meetings going back to October. The millage rate for the township, I'm stumbling as I try to pull up a spreadsheet, so let me just pull it up, and you're going to have to listen to me stumble around. Ian, if we could switch over to my laptop real quick. That's going to be difficult to see even in this room. So we, we put together a quick summary. The first, I'll, I'll jump to this little table first, showing that the current township millage rate is 3.9228 mils. It has been at that rate since 2016. The rate, the, there was an increase in 2016 that was 0.1717 mils, and that was dedicated specifically for the payment of the bonds that the board issued for the library, park, and trail improvements. The last time the millage was adjusted to fund general operations of the township was way back in 2012. So the township has had a nice run of no millage increases, and what we've done in those years is we've realized pretty sharp increases in business tax revenues, and that has, those revenues have been what the township has utilized to fund ongoing operations, as well as start adding in the OPEB funding plan, which is roughly 1.2 million a year for 2019, as well as funding our entire capital program, which can range anywhere from 2 to 3 million per year. So we've benefited from having increased real estate, or I'm sorry, business taxes over those years. And then what we saw in 2018 was a, a pretty quick reduction in those taxes to roughly $2 million. Now, for next year, we're forecasting returning back to prior year's amounts, but as we, we spent a lot of time talking in these meetings of how comfortable we are with that or what we think the likelihood is. And it's, it's really, as we've talked about, it's tough to, to forecast. So the, the tax increase that is built into this ordinance now, like I mentioned, represents a 6% adjustment. It'll generate roughly $760,000. Of that, 760, about $591,000 is going to come from the residential piece, the businesses will pay 158, and then a smaller percentage from the other, which is vacant ground and public, public utility land. The median tax bill today is a little over $1,000, 1,057. With the increase, it'll be 1,120. Again, that's just a barometer, it's, I understand that everyone's tax bill is, is different. What is important to note here is that I think a lot of people, when they hear tax increase and they hear 6%, they immediately associate it with their full tax bill. And all we're talking about here, not all, but what we're talking about here is just the township share of the real estate tax, which, when you look at our total millage, the township at, if this ordinance passes, the township millage would be 4.1582 mils, which is clearly the smallest piece of the total tax bill that we're paying. So it's, if people are applying the percentage to their tax bill, they're getting, it's just the Radnor portion of it. We're not talking about the schools or the county portion. And then when, the other question that I've heard over the last couple of days is what is it, what is it being used for? This graph represents real quickly in the general fund what we use the tax money for. So this is total expenses. On the revenue side, what's funding this is not just the real estate tax that we all pay, but it's also the business taxes that are generated through the Act 511 program, the realty transfer, as well as departmental earnings, either through permits, fees, fines, or direct costs for service. But what that money's being spent on, protection to persons and property, which includes our police, community development, and then our contributions to the fire companies. So that's just shy of 12 million a year. Our public works department, which is just shy of 7 million, that is our, not only our trash and recycling collection, but it's also the, the highway crew, as well as the park maintenance crew. We heard earlier tonight of roughly 1.7 million being allocated to the maintenance of parks. That's, that's that number. That's the, the park maintenance crew of the public works department. In addition, those are the broad categories that each of the, the public works crews are divided in, but the other services that they all provide when needed is the township-wide snow removal, as well as the leaf pickup, which they're doing right now. And they also provide special services when there are storms, flood cleanup, special circumstances that come up from time to time. The, that, the public works guys are the ones who are responding, they're helping out with all the township events, and they're the, they're the ones that are, are making a lot of that stuff happen. And then the next category we have is pension and OPEB, and we've spent a lot of time talking about that. The pension piece is, well, that's, the pension piece is the amortiz, I don't want to get too technical, but the amortization on the unfunded part of our MMO. So if we jump back to our September discussion, we passed the MMO, the pension cost is split into two. We have the amortization of the unfunded piece, which if the township ceased operations permanently tomorrow, we would still owe that. The other half, or roughly half of the pension expense is the, the normal cost or our annual obligations based on the employees who are working today. So the only part that's included in this total here is the, the amortization of the unfunded piece, and that's roughly half of that 4 million, the rest is our OPEB funding. General government includes the administration IT, buildings and grounds, which is this building, public works, as well as the costs we incur at parking lots and, and some of the, the general areas of the township. We have about 3 million that we owe out of debt service for the general fund, parks and recreation, 2.2 million. And then we have our capital outlaid, again, as we've talked about, this number only includes the pay-as-you-go portion of the capital plan. It doesn't include any of the infrastructure and long-term assets that presumably in January we're going to talk about, not just the project listing, but then how to fund it. And then the last couple of categories, we have the library, community organization funding, and then a small piece for the interfund transfers, which is mostly 200, almost 200,000 of that is going to the park and open space fund for debt service on the, the open space purchase. Just lastly, before, I'll turn it back over to the board, is this is all included in various parts throughout the budget document. I just pulled little snippets out. This graph is also included that shows what the historical millage rates have been back to 20, or 2001 through 2018, for the three different taxing authorities in Radnor, which includes the, the school district, Delaware County, and the township. So I, it, it gets lost in, in the, the size of the graph. There have been increases over time in the Radnor Township Millage, but it's certainly not been anything that makes this, makes the number jump, nor would any, the increase that's being proposed for 19. So again, it's not to discount the fact that it's real money and it, it will cost more, but it does show that, again, that the township is the smallest piece of what we're paying as taxpayers, and the needle has not moved much over time. And that is the reason, the primary reason for that is our business taxes. And then lastly, this, again, this is also included in the back of the budget, but we do a comparison with our neighboring townships, based on a level assessed value, the cost to live in those townships. And with our tax increase included, Radnor still, in terms of township only, Radnor is still on the lower end of the comparison. So I will now turn it back over to the board and answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. White, for all that really good information. I will ask for commissioner comment, but I would please like to ask that we be respectful and we give everyone an opportunity before we speak again. So commissioner comment, please.
So 6% was the number that I pushed for, so I guess I
So, 6% was the number that I pushed for, so I guess I should maybe go first. 6% most noticeably does not fill the entirety of the deficit gap. We have about a $5.88 million deficit going into next year, and we're only going to be raising about $760,000 in the additional income that we will be generating by this millage increase, which raises the question, where are we going to get the additional funds? And the answer is, this basically works like personal finance in a lot of ways. We're not the federal government. We cannot simply just issue debt without any, without a bank being involved or buyers being involved. We can't just print currency. Instead, we have to either raise more taxes for the residents, raise more revenue from some other source, be it business, mercantile, earned income, whatever. We have to cut the services that we provide, whether they're services that you personally want, or your neighbors want, or you're indifferent to. We can cut them and save money that way, or we can borrow. Those are our options. We can go to the banks. We can make bond issuings, and that's about it. Those are the only real levers that we have. So, what we've done is, I say "we," what the township manager has done is found a little bit more than $500,000 worth of, I'm not going to say fat, because it's not really fat, but he's found $500,000 that the township can cut and still continue to provide the same services to the residents. So, we're trying to share some of that pain with the township residents. Then, the balance of the money, we have a reserve fund. We're going to end up dipping into the reserve fund, which is problematic for us, because next year, hopefully, some of the business taxes will rebound, and hopefully, we'll have more money, but we are required to replenish that, which is why it's really, really important that the dollars that we end up taking out of that reserve fund be dollars that we're able to repay. If we can't repay into the reserve fund in 2019 what we took out in this year, then we're going to end up in trouble. We have an ordinance that requires us to do so, and frankly, even if we didn't, it would be irresponsible fiscal management of the township to simply take out of our savings with no expectation of putting back in. And if the expectation of putting back in, and I put that in scare quotes, if the expectation of putting back in is just, hey, hopefully, at some point down the line, we'll be able to do this, that's not good fiscal management. That's hoping that eventually we'll win the lottery. So, what we're doing today, what I'm going to be voting for today, is something that gives us some flexibility. It allows us to meet our obligations. We're cutting some of the projects that we want to do next year, so our capital budget is going to shrink radically. We are cutting some of the expenses that we have had thus far. We're asking the residents for a little bit of help, and it really is a little bit. Most people are going to end up paying between 50 and 60 more dollars per year. That works out to a couple of bucks a month. And I recognize that that matters to some people. I recognize that a couple of bucks a month matters more to some than others, but nevertheless, I did also have a couple of phone calls this week where I was asked why I was going to be raising federal income taxes, which I'm not doing. That will not happen as a result of what we're doing tonight, I promise. It ended up being very pleasant phone calls afterwards when I got to make that explanation. So, yeah, this gives us flexibility going into next year. We will have the ability to repay the reserve fund. We will have the ability to repay our borrowing, and then we will have to reassess what we're going to do about revenues next year, or what we're going to do about costs. The one other point that I'd like to make is a very, very brief response to what Mr. Perot had raised, which was the issue of the township funding charitable services. The first is, a lot of those charitable services are things that I think a lot of people imagine are actually township-provided services. They're not. So, we're funding the fire company, for instance, in this budget. That's not part of the township. If we chose not to fund the fire company, they've made it pretty clear, they would not be able to come and put fires out in your homes. We're funding the library. That's not part of the township. They are their own organization, which means that if we chose not to fund the library, the likely result would be that we wouldn't have a township library. Parks are part of the library. The claim was that we should, sorry, parks are part of the township, thank you, and I guess the argument was we shouldn't fund the parks. That just boils down to a fundamental disagreement, I guess, about what core services are for the township. I think that if we had a township that didn't have a fire department, that didn't have parks, that didn't have a library, we would all be far poorer for it, and frankly, I'm counting on the fact that most of the residents don't want that. So, with that background in mind, I'm planning to vote in favor of this ordinance.
Any additional Commissioner comment?
Just to go on a comment that Commissioner Larkin mentioned, so we, this budget includes $100,000 for the Radnor Fire Company. Their request was for $250,000, which is a 40%, no, we're funding it at 40%, whereas we're funding the library and their additional request at 100%. We're funding the Wayne Senior Center and their additional request at 100%. I see our core responsibility is ensuring the safety of our residents, and I'm asking, I guess, staff and Solicitor Rice, is there a way at this late stage that we could look for additional costs to cut in the budget to fully fund the fire department's request?
The tax levy ordinance has been advertised. If you're going to change any significant numbers, you're going to have to re-advertise it. The one thing that Bill and I had talked about is if during the fiscal year, come January, you can do supplemental appropriations. So, that's been done in the past. It's permitted by the charter. Manager would have to certify that there's revenues available, but under Section 708D, you could do supplemental appropriation for that additional money. But otherwise, you're going back, advertising it, having another public hearing, and, you know, bringing this back to the full board for another hearing.
All right. Well, I don't think, we may be too late in the game, then, to do it in this budget. What I would ask my colleagues is that early in 2019, we look at doing a supplemental, you know, in this budget, we're funding OPEB, other post-employment benefits, at 1.2 million, which is not required, like, we don't have to be funding that. So, when we talk about shortfalls, that's a line item that we don't need to be doing this year. So, you know, I voted against a 6% raise. I still am not in support of it, but I would like to see this board fund the fire company, that additional 150,000, because as they showed two meetings ago, they're meeting, they're not meeting their times, you know, they're minutes late on responding to fire calls, and at some point, that's going to, that's going to cost, you know, property, possibly lives. And our job is to make sure that residents are secure, and we need to fund the fire department at 250,000.
I'd like to point out that the 250 was an additional ask. They still got a fairly significant amount of money provided to the fire company.
And I agree with that, John. It's 250,000, but we're not talking equipment. We're talking bodies. They're not able to get volunteers. If you go by the fire department, you'll see the doors closed, you know, instead of volunteers, it's a national trend. We are hiring, you know, fire departments are hiring full-time, and, you know, let's not get behind the curve there, too.
Well, hopefully, that's one of the things we'll be able to address during our extra meetings next year.
Yeah, I'm not, I would support that, both of those two comments. I'm going out of order. I will withdraw. I will come back, and I will express support.
Wow, wow, wow.
I think it's important, we're having a dialogue that, you know, Commissioner Larkin, I'd like to hear your comments, so, you know, you either don't lose your train of thought, or we don't get on another topic and it gets lost.
Well, hold on. Lisa, so, when other, when other people named Rich Booker do it, Lisa interrupts and says, "You're not being respectful," when John Larkin, Jack Larkin does it, it's okay.
Rich, you got to talk on the last topic, so.
Okay. Gentlemen, I agree with the dialogue as well, but we tend to have individuals that take over. So, I think we owe it to each other to be respectful and to give everyone an opportunity to speak before we revisit things again. And, yes, Commissioner Larkin, if you could wait one moment to make your additional point. Thank you. Commissioner Booker, did you want to speak?
Why, yes, thank you. Thank you for, take the floor. One of the questions I was asked over this past two weeks, Mr. White, was, can you give us a breakdown of the $2 million shortfall in the BPMT? How does that, when we talked about it last month or last meeting, we said that there were some refunds that were provided to various taxpayers, but it seems like the refunds would not be enough to make up a $2 million shortfall. So, where, what's the waterfall that makes up the whole 2 million there?
Yeah, so, ballparking it, we issued about $1 million in refunds. So, I would say the million in refunds, and the other, the other million is from just a shortfall in business tax filings and payments. The number of businesses filing and paying is, has not changed. It's been the same level for years, so it hasn't been a drop-off in the number of businesses that are filing in Radnor. It's been on, I mean, the tax is based on gross receipts, so it's been a reduction in those gross receipts. The refunds, a couple of the significant ones were one-time in nature in that the business moved out the year prior, so they were, this was their final filing in reconciliation of their estimate versus actual, which required a refund to them. So, when we talked about setting expectations for next year, it was based on a replacement business going in that space, which is difficult to track, but again, we're looking at the number of filers, and we're looking at our top 25 filers, and they're relatively consistent. So, that's why we said that there's some expectation that we'll return back to normal next year, because the refunds were one-time in nature. And had we not had to issue those refunds, if those businesses were still here, presumably, that $2 million shortfall would have only been a million. So, that's the breakdown in that drop-off, and some explanation on next year. The only other thing I'll add to that is that's just the business privilege side of it. We talked a little bit about mercantile, which is, in magnitude, business privilege is 8.5 million, or 6.5 this year. Mercantile's about a million and a half, a little bit less than that. It is actually doing much better this year, and so, next year, we anticipated a little bit of growth there, too. So, it's really just, this, the mercantile side is the retail activity in Radnor. It's the goods and services we're buying at a store or a restaurant, whereas the business privilege is more, generically speaking, for professional services, financial, legal, and the like. So, that's the other breakdown of, or another important distinction between those two tax bases.
Well, thank you. I see this as particularly significant, because this $2 million shortfall is really driving the issues that we're having this year. Now, I would note that we have had some significant stores or some significant space in Wayne that's been empty for some time, and that that likely contributed to this. There's several storefronts in Wayne that are not occupied, and in addition, there's been some corporate moves that have also affected this, and I know of one real estate development company that's moved. So, want everyone to, that was a question that was asked, and so, I wanted the people to understand, that's what the shortfall is, and that's driving our shortage. Now, what I would say is that it's very easy for this board to sit up here and say, "We need to raise more of other people's money." Mr. Perot was very cogent, eloquent in what he said. If there is a shortfall like we have this year in business privilege and mercantile, we can offset that. We are allowed to do that, and I'm, I know, we talked about, there was a savings of 500,000. I don't think we've really isolated that, so we need some more, some more on that, and we'll find out about that as the months go by, I guess. But, it's very easy for us to say, "Just raise the taxes," instead of looking for other ways to deal with it. In this instance, what the easiest way to deal with it would be simply to draw on the rainy day fund, that is, the fund balance, and it would be perfectly appropriate to do that this year. What I would also note for everyone here is that the biggest component of what this tax increase that we're doing this year, this budget, is to pay OPEB, other post-employment benefits. This is not pension. This is not a required obligation that we have. This is not an unfunded accrued actual liability for pension payments. This is OPEB, other post-employment benefits, basically healthcare for retirees, for them and their families for their lifetimes. It's makeup payments that we have decided by policy to pay between now and 2054. And what I would say is that, to their credit, Bill White and Bob Z recommended to this board that we not make that makeup payment that we are paying in by policy for other post-employment benefits, OPEB, 1.2 million. We don't need to make that payment. It's not an obligation. This would be, again, it'd be perfectly appropriate not to make that payment this year and to not increase taxes on our constituents, such as Mr. Perot discussed. I would also like to make the point, we did have a 4.6% increase in 2016. With this 6% increase in 2019, that's a 10.6% increase over those four years, which is actually higher than the Consumer Price Index inflation over that period. Another major point on a per annum basis, another major point is that even with the proposed increase that the Democrat majority will vote for later today to increase taxes, the capital needs section is not addressed. So, what Commissioner Larkin talked about is simply not the case. We will, in fact, be having 12 meetings, that Lisa scheduled, where we will sit and do nothing but figure out what extra projects or what more projects we're going to do, and what more expenditures and indebtedness we will incur as a board and impose upon the taxpayer. So, what we will do is fund some projects, if not all, in 2019. That's why we scheduled 12 meetings, and you heard me make this point earlier tonight about why do we do that, 12 meetings? We're going to make these capital needs known. We're going to add more projects, and what we will be doing will be off-income statement funding. So, to the extent that indebtedness is incurred in 2019 in respect of projects previously approved or approved subsequently, that will be 2019 projects, we don't have a debt service component that would be offset, that we would use in this budget to pay for it. It simply is excluded. Therefore, we will be paying any debt service attributable to new projects for 2019 out of either fund balance or other means that will need to be rolled in in 2020. So, not only will we have any increase in 2020, we will also have the makeup of the capital projects that we're not approving right now, the debt service for, that will need to be made up, and we still will be dipping into reserves to make any payments for 2019. So, very important issue. We, with this increase, do not account for any increase in debt service for 2019 projects. Many capital projects that are already approved, including a bridge at Mattson Ford Road for my area, for trails, for other, other projects, these projects were approved, monies have been approved, and contracts have been approved, and we have no money in this budget to pay for it. So, don't think it's not going to get paid. It will get paid. It's just going to be on top of the 6%. That's my point, folks. 6% for 2019 is a misnomer. It's 6% plus whatever projects we approve, and those will come up over the next 12 meetings. Also, I again disagree with Attorney Larkin, who stepped off the dais conveniently. There is an increase in federal income taxes on most people or many taxpayers in 2018. For 2018, you are now limited on your state and local tax deduction for federal income tax purposes. One of my One of my constituents pays over $70,000 a year in property taxes. All of us will be, him and the rest of us, will be limited to only $10,000 a year in state and local taxes. So that means your PIT and your, your, your ad valorem taxes. So to the extent that your state and local taxes exceed $10,000, you are going to pay more. And to the extent we raise your taxes for state and local purposes, and specifically your ad valorem taxes in Radnor, that is no longer deductible. Therefore, you do, in fact, have an increase in your federal income taxes. Some more than others, some it'll be minor. But many, many people will see an income tax increase as a result of the state and local tax limitation on federal tax purposes. And what we do here tonight with a 6% increase only exacerbates that issue. But there's no question that federal income taxes will be going up this year and this adds to it for many, many taxpayers. Finally, don't have it on here, but again, I'm, I, I thank Mr. Perot, I think that's for coming up. To the extent that we are making donations out of your tax dollars for, to 501(c)(3) charitable organizations, we really are, by the same principle, hurting those people who will no longer be able to avail themselves of that deduction. So to the extent that the township takes our money and gives it to a 501(c)(3), if you're already over the 10,000, you took what was a deductible expense and it's no longer deductible. So there's a very good policy reason that was raised in public comment for this board to stop completely funding any 501(c)(3). And the policy reason is because we should let people, at least if they want to fund it, at least have them have the opportunity to take a tax deduction for it as a charitable deduction rather than as property tax. Let me finish. So I think that it's, it's incorrect to say that the library is not part of the township. It is part of the town. It's a township building. Okay? There is a separate 501(c)(3) that operates, the, the library. But the library building is township-owned asset. And the township does, to a certain extent, have input in that. And the, and the library is a cultural and societal benefit that, that this and prior, the prior boards and, and the country in general has deemed worthy. So I think that that's a different than a Suri Services, in my view. But I, the point is, is well taken in that if you can make the deduction separate, if you can make the contribution separately, taxpayers in Radnor could avail themselves of that. And by us taking the tax money and then giving it, we actually are limiting that ability to do so because of the changes in federal tax law. So I will not be supporting, I guess it's pretty obvious that I'm not going to support the, the 6% tax increase this, this budget. I am going to come to these 12 meetings and I encourage everybody to come to these capital project meetings. I don't really understand what we're going to do, but the theory is, is that we're going to argue with each other about what projects can't be done or shouldn't be done. I, I don't think there's many on the list that shouldn't be done. Some of them we can, we can talk about. We're gonna, you know, certain, certain projects for upgrades in Wayne or something, you know, certain, certain things, trees. But the projects that we are deferring and we'll talk about later in 2019 or maybe, maybe even late 2018 are basically pretty needed projects. So we have some sewer work, we have some, some tree work, we have some other projects that are bridges and some, you know, we could, we could argue about the trails. We don't really need trails probably, but there's certain trails that we should, there's one at least I can think of that we, we're working on. These people are point of order.
Commissioner Booker, can you?
So, so what I would, what I would say is this. We do not need to raise these taxes. We have a surplus that we can dip into. We can see what has caused the shortfall this year. It was business tax revenues, which again, I predicted because of our aggressive audit and our, our un-business friendly position with these businesses relative to other neighbors. But nonetheless, we can address that, we can make a plan going forward. And that's what we should do, rather than once again calling for other people's money to put into this budget so that we can pay excessive benefits and do other things that were negotiated years ago. So we shouldn't do it. We should, we should not raise taxes on these folks. And I, I would implore this board to not approve this budget this evening.
There's two things that I haven't heard. And first of all is, I know that everything is dollar and cents, dollar and cents, dollar and cents. And it comes down to the bottom line. But a lot of us live here in Radnor for the intangible things. Our parks, our, even our trash guys, our schools, which is a separate entity, I know, our library, et cetera. And to me, that's the most important thing. When you say that items like OPEB, it's not mandatory, it's not mandatory today, right now. But you have police and other people that have worked and dedicated their lives. And to say that we don't want to fund them and their families, I don't think that's a good example of trying to get employees going on in, in the future. I don't like the situation we're in. I don't think anybody here does. But I think that we need to set a good example to the employees. And a good example of that would be, say, Saturday night, I noticed a lot of the police and staff, some got paid, some didn't get paid. But I know Lisa, you took a picture of probably 120 people here that were working on a Saturday night. And yeah, they were volunteering. They work here, but they're volunteering. That's the intangible, and I'll speak for myself, of why I live here in Radnor. So while it may seem counterintuitive to think that this, you know, and it's going to be counterintuitive to a lot of people when I say this, to think that a modest tax increase, it actually, I believe, it actually keeps taxes low because we protect these intangibles. We protect our parks, we protect the things that we love and why we live here in Radnor. And that's what makes Radnor great. And it only comes down to $6 to the average household per month. So it's, let me rephrase it. The fact is, is it keeps our property values high. A $6 a month increase, I don't think anyone's going to sell their house and deal with the moving costs of moving out of the township for a $6, on average, a $6 increase per month. But I believe that this increase, it does. It protects the things that we hold important, it protects those intangibles, and it keeps our property values high by protecting the reasons why we live here. And based on that, I will be voting for this extremely modest increase. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comment this evening? Commissioner Nagel? Good? Commissioner?
Well, you may remember, I actually asked for a 10% increase because I didn't want to dip into reserves at all. And I caution everyone in the audience to recognize that Commissioner Booker was making a purely political speech and very few of what he said were facts. They were his opinions. We pay the OPEB now because we have, in the past, we didn't take care of this. You, as today's citizens, should be contributing for the services you receive. The service you receive from our employees includes OPEB in their future, but you put the money just like you do for your pension. What would happen if your own pension funds, they waited until you retired to look for the money? Well, we know what's happened because we've seen it with steel companies. So again, that's, that was important and that's why I thought to kept the OPEB in. I don't think businesses are moving out because of the reasons cited. In fact, all the surrounding communities also have 511 taxes. What I've seen actually is several businesses have moved from Radnor to Bryn Mawr. And when I actually went in and asked them why, they said because the rents in Radnor are getting out of hand. So weigh that as you will. But I certainly will support a 6% tax rate increase. And I'm retired on a fixed income, too, folks, so that hits me also. And it's not other people's money. We all pay taxes.
My statements were completely factual.
Commissioner Booker.
He addressed it directly. My statements were factual, absolutely factual and absolutely true.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Clark?
Same thing I've said at the previous five or six hours we've spent on this. And it's, the Township Manager's recommended budget had a 0% tax increase. It covered all the essentials that have been discussed. We were not going to lose any collection or any services whatsoever. And this increase is being driven by the extra contribution to OPEB, which I like, I'm all for it, if we have the money. We don't have the money. It's voluntary, therefore it should not be paid. That's just the way I see it. Therefore, I'm not supporting the tax increase because I don't think it's necessary.
I will not rehash everything that's been said by some of my other board colleagues, but I will be supporting this increase this evening. I believe that we need to start covering our costs. I think that the post-employment benefits, it's important to continue to stay on that schedule. We sit here as a board with many things that have been neglected and not funded in the past, and now we have to figure out how to do that. I believe the post, the other post-employment benefits is something that we should not kick down the road had it already happened. And we only really started this plan, what, maybe four years ago to, four, six years ago, five? Thank you. I knew it was somewhere there. And I don't think that we should stop now. And I am concerned that the way things are going, that we will not be recouping some of those, the business privilege tax. I know Mr. White is doing his very best to provide a good estimate for it, but, you know, I am very concerned that, that that is going to be something we're going to be facing. I think this township is looking at a, a revenue stream situation. And yeah, we will have maybe 12 meetings, maybe not, but we do need to discuss these things. And I find it interesting that the commissioners that don't support this budget yet, then in another breath, talk about all the things they want to fund. We're all looking at the same budget, the same budget that doesn't have any money for these projects, doesn't have any money, and we are still having to increase taxes and dip into reserves. So I think we have some, a lot of work ahead of us and a lot of work to do in the future. But I will be supporting this this evening. I don't take it lightly. I, you know, $63 a year on average for some people is, is significant. And I, I understand that and, you know, will do everything I can to make sure that we don't have to do this in the future. So with that, I believe every commissioner has spoken to this. I'm going to ask for staff comment at this point.
Well, don't we have a chance to have follow-up comment?
Do you have anything new to add to the conversation with regards to this?
First, Commissioner Larkin, if he wanted to finish his thoughts on the fire department?
I appreciate that. I'll, I'll very briefly say that I would support adding to the fire, to, adding to the money that we're paying to the firefighters into a lot of other different people, but then we, we just end up getting into a math problem. So I'm looking forward to working with you and a bunch of other people next year on finding those funds. And otherwise, I think a lot of people have chimed in and said what I would otherwise say.
All right. And my final comment is, I hear, I hear a lot of comments, a lot of comments up here talking about the need to fund OPEB, a voluntary line item for this year, yet I don't, I've, I didn't hear the need to fund our first responders. You know, we're going to fund a voluntary line item at 1.2 million, but we're going to fund our fire company, their additional request, at 40%. When we, you know, when a fire happens, when an emergency's there, we expect the fire company to show up on time and provide the care. So to provide OPEB at 1.2 when we don't need to, but only fund the fire company at 40% doesn't equate, it just doesn't sit well with me.
So with regard?
I'm sorry, Jake, is that 40% total or 40% of their ask?
40% of their additional ask of $250,000.
Okay, so it's their additional ask. Okay, it's not total. I just want to make sure that we get that.
Which is what we, which is what I said earlier. You know, it's $250,000 for, I believe, two full-time positions because, let's, let's face it, it's a national trend, we're not getting volunteers anymore.
So what could we do to help the firefighters get more volunteers?
Point of order, that's, you know, so.
Yeah, I don't think that that's, so I'll just comment on the fire department. I met with the, the fire department two Fridays ago and we had a very robust conversation with regards to their needs moving forward. And yeah, certainly you are correct, they are not getting the volunteers. And we may be looking at having to fund a fire company with more paid volunteers. And that is something that we need to address moving forward. I think that the $250,000 ask was not something that we anticipated coming forward. Again, when we start these conversations in October and we have these groups come to us in October and we have basically eight weeks to figure this out or less, I don't, I don't, those are conversations we can't be having. Those are, they are important. They are conversations that need to start far earlier so that we can figure out how to do this. And I would support if we need to go back and we can, we have the ability to go back in the beginning of the year and provide more funding to the fire department, I am fine doing that. But we have to find more long-term solutions as well to, to their problems or to their issues of volunteers and their ratio to volunteers and paid staff. So, and those are, those are questions I think we need to, to look at. I said sewers, I said stormwater, and I said emergency services earlier. And those are the three things that I think we need to really honestly address.
Can I just ask Chief McGuire, if you don't mind? So the, the shortfall that we're, that we're giving you, how is that going to affect response time? And can you put your two cents in? Because it's important, we want our citizens to be safe.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name's Ryan McGuire, for those who don't know me, lifelong Radnor resident. I've been with the fire company for 16 years. You know, it's, I guess the easiest way to start this out is it's not easy for us to come to the board to ask for anything. You know, generally, we're the people that are coming out to help other people, they're asking us for help. It's not a comfortable feeling for us to go to another group and ask for help. The additional $250,000 that we were asking for was going to be for at least two paid employees and additional part-time employees. I mean, we're, we're talking about actual people in seats going to call staffing trucks 24/7. Right now, our EMS division is staffed 24/7. The fire side, you know, we're relying on people to roll out of bed at 2 o'clock in the morning when a fire call, you know, any, any emergency incident pops up, we're getting up and going to that. It takes time to get from our homes to the fire company, to the firehouse, to wherever the incident is. So what we're trying to do is cut that time down and get trucks out on the road immediately. Now, the $250,000 helps maintain our combination department. So it's partially paid, partially volunteer. That's our goal. We'd like to keep the volunteers there for as long as we can. If we close the doors tomorrow and said we couldn't answer fire calls or EMS calls anymore, unfortunately, it still falls back on, on the township to, to follow through with that service. No, a 24/7, 365-day-a-year service, you'd end up looking at a budget that's very similar to the police department budget. As of right now, our budget is below $1 million a year. And a lot of that money is earmarked to things that we cannot use for paid employees. There's capital plans that we have in place, there's truck replacement schedules we have in place. $300,000 chunk of that is relief money that comes in from the state that can only be used for volunteers and can only be used for specific things for the volunteers, like gear, some training, the tools that are on the trucks. We can't use that money to pay for anything else. So the additional $250,000 is big for us to be able to get more people in the seats on the trucks to be able to answer calls 24/7 to make sure that the emergency situation's being handled. being handled correctly. You know, we don't want it to get to the point where, you know, we have to just throw our hands up and say we can't do it anymore. We'd like to keep this combination department going for as long as we can. And you have to remember that we're all taxpayers, we're all residents. Most of the people that are getting out of bed in the middle of the night are your neighbors and your friends. You know, we've tried other things. I know we've had some commissioners ask us what we've done to economize, to try to reduce our budget. There's really not much we can do. We can't ask people that we're not paying to do even more, to including shelling out their own money to pay for stuff. It's kind of, you know, we're at a crossroads at that point. You know, I'm happy to answer any other questions you guys might have, but I know that for us, we've looked at the numbers, we've had actuarial reports done, we've tried to do everything we can do on our side to get our numbers to work where they're at. It just, it's not quite lining up.
How does that affect response time?
As of right now, our response times are still, we're governed by the NFPA, the National Fire Protection Association. We're still within those parameters, so we're hitting the numbers that we legally need to require. But to be honest, we're a big township, 14 square miles. Our fire, fire department's located right in the center of town. You know, if there's an incident at one corner of town, even lights and sirens, it can take eight, nine, 10 minutes to get there at emergency speed. So, you know, we would really like to see that time in between dispatch and a truck getting out on the road cut down. And the only way to do that is to have people in the station 24/7.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Sure.
Okay. Any additional staff comment? Mr. Zinkowski?
Thank you, Madam President. Just to, just to recap briefly, I know I'd proposed a 0% tax increase to the board. That was with a stipulation that the board was going to meet to discuss and address numerous issues that are facing the township because whatever is proposed is long-term. You want to put things in place that you're going to solve long-term and not just put Band-Aids on, which I believe this township has done for many, many, many years. We talk about, you know, funding community groups and organizations. That's one of the meetings we want to have. And also, just to correct, the schedule calls for 10 meetings. It's not 12. I think 10 is way short of what the time we need to meet on because there are many issues, and they won't be decided at that meeting. That will continue discussion.
It'll feel like 12.
Because there's 10, 10 special meetings. There's not one in August, and there isn't one in December. So there's 10. So...
I said it'll feel like 12.
Well, the issues are that they have to be addressed. And when you haven't addressed them for years, that's where you have to meet and discuss and set policy. Because when you look at library levy funding and fire department funding, you look at the library, their dollars go up. I would have to guess that most people in the township don't realize we support the library. That is one that I will pitch and propose to the board, that a library levy go on the ballot and let the voters vote on that. When I hear about the fire department, you know, managing a fire department for many years, by adding two additional people, is that going to reduce the response time for people? I doubt it will because two people aren't going to make that difference. This is a long-term structural issue that the township has to address and plan for. This is not going to be the difference between 100,000 and 250,000, in my opinion, isn't going to make a difference. It's not going to cut three minutes off response time. It won't. And unless there's a guarantee from the fire department, they'll never guarantee that that's going to reduce minutes. There's a long-term plan that has to be put in place because, as was mentioned before, there is a shift away from volunteer fire departments. That day is coming at us faster. And you think this is, this 6% is big? You're talking about moving this thing up about 10 million. And what would it be to put $10 million? What would that tax increase look like? So it'd be like, hold on to, hold on to everything with that coming. $500,000, I know there was a mention about not sure where the manager would come up with. That was addressed and discussed with the board of where that was going to come with. So I guess I'm kind of surprised I hear you don't know where that's coming from.
Wasn't discussed with the public, is what I...
It was discussed with the board because it was a matter of personnel, so, unless the board, because I can get into what that conversation is, but I won't. I will also address in the 10 meetings, items that have to be addressed. We have stormwater sewer projects. We probably have tens of millions of dollars of projects that have to be decided. What are we going to do with those? Sanitary sewer projects, we have at least 15 million on the books with a system that's crumbling. You have to meet and discuss what's going to take place with those. Tree maintenance, as everyone's aware, the township's responsible for all the trees in the right of way. We are 25 to 30 years behind schedule in maintaining those trees. It's discussed about $2 to $3 million per year would have to be invested, invested to catch us up over at least a 10-year period. That's coming. If everyone doesn't realize, all the state roads we have in the township where there are many of these, we have accepted maintenance, tree maintenance repair of those by default because PennDOT does not maintain those. Because if you left all those roads with holes in them that we never patched, that we should or trim the trees that fall, we have accepted a lot of responsibilities. And that's why PennDOT makes me sick when they say, oh, our budgets, we're under budget. Every community picks up their tab for this. That needs to be addressed as well. How are we going to continue to maintain that? When you look at capital improvement projects, this building needs a roof. It shouldn't. It's not that old, but it wasn't built the right way. You have roofs at the rack, you have roofs at our public works garage that are going to cost money. Where, how are we going to fund those? How are we going to put those in place? You have parks. And I understand the concern that parks aren't that important. There are a lot of people in this community that care about their parks, care about their trails. You need to maintain those and repair those. And you can't wait for 20 years behind schedule to be able to do that because it's going to continue to cost us. In 2008, there was 147 full-time employees in the township. Today, we sit at 127. So we've reduced staff by 20. And actually, you're still maintaining, if not better, on the services in this township. And that's a credit to the staff, the employees that work every day, that come in, they care about the community, those who either pick up trash, pick up leaves. And a lot of that is combination because public works, actually, the parks guys now are not out in the parks, they're actually taking care of leaves, which has an impact to stormwater management because the leaves impact those. So there is a lot that goes on. That's why in 10 meetings, this is just a fraction of what we need to talk and address. Those are policies the board sets. Those are ones that, again, as we go through the process, trying to make these transparent to the public so you're not caught off guard, you have the open dialogue and you're discussing these. So I know there was one other topic, Bill. I know OPEB, if you just want to briefly touch that?
Yeah, we've spent a lot of time talking about it already. I just, I flashback to 2011 and '12 when there was a lot of confusion about what that is and why it's important to fund, or at least at the time when we worked with Carfac and they submitted their recommendation, and then ultimately, we adopted the OPEB funding plan. So the point I wanted to make, because it tends to not get mentioned when we talk about the funding of the existing obligations, is that in the main part, the other part of the OPEB funding plan was the reduction of benefits for township employees. And that, that's a significant part of that plan. And that's still, regardless of funding, both of our unions have agreed to smaller benefits, the civilian union agreeing to eliminating it entirely for all their new hires. And then police has significantly reduced benefits. So I, that always gets lost in the conversation, but it, the days of offering that kind of health care in retirement, not only did the board recognize that, but the employees themselves recognized that those benefits aren't realistic in, in today's environment, and they've rolled those back as well. So the, the part that we are funding are the obligations that built up over decades that went off the books until the mid, roughly 2003, when governmental accounting standards required the township start calculating that, that obligation. So I just want to make sure that folks understand that in addition to the dollars and cents of funding the program, there was a component on the employee side where that benefit was reduced or eliminated, and they're, they held up their end of the bargain.
And if I may, just to add, I know that there was a comment about aggressive audits on the businesses, creating a business-friendly environment. If you can see in the graph that's there about the audits, you can see how they are dramatically being, have been reduced. So the idea that we are out hitting every business, really hammering them, creating unfriendly, you can see the number of audits have actually dropped. I think that discussion about business unfriendly and that is the topics of one of those 10 meetings that we will have with the board as we reposition ourselves on redevelopment of existing properties. This is not expanding our base. It's about redeveloping what we currently have.
All right. Any additional staff comment? I'm going to call public comment. Is there any public comment to the current motion on the floor?
Yes.
Good evening.
Hi, Jane Gally, 7th Ward, Barclayton Road. I've been not coming to these meetings as long as Sarah, but quite a while. And even watching them on television, I continually have seen over the years that a lot of cans have been kicked down the road over and over again. And they all, everybody up here goes, oh, no tax increase, oh, no tax increase. Well, that's all well and good. But Bob is in like, talk about between a rock and a hard place. He has to put out, and this board has to provide, the services that the people of Radnor expect. But gas goes up, cost of cars goes up, cost of, you know, even asphalt goes up. But if we keep holding taxes down, if we had given little tiny tax breaks, tax increases along the way, we wouldn't be talking 10 or even worse right now because it would have been covered, it would have been a cost of living increase kind of a deal. And we haven't really done that for quite a few, for as long as I've been coming here. There's, oh, no, no new taxes this year. Good for you. You know? But the problem is eventually, somebody's got to pay the taxes. And somebody's got to, if you want to have, we don't have our trash picked up in the back anymore. Okay, that was fine. We'll put it at the curb. But I mean, all of those things cost money. And if we don't increase a little bit here and there, now we're going to have to be hit with a big one. Well, it, it all, it shows up eventually. You have to pay the piper eventually. And I mean, I'm not for increases, and I'm on a fixed income, but I understand the economics of the whole deal.
Any additional public comment?
Jane, we've had 10%, 10.6 over the last four years.
Commissioner Booker, this is public comment, please.
We have, we have...
Public comment, this is public comment, please.
So what, so what we see here is where Commissioner...
Comment.
Commissioner Barrowsky, when somebody disagrees...
Commissioner Booker, Commissioner Booker.
When somebody disagrees with her, when somebody disagrees, this is what she does.
It is public comment now.
If someone agrees, they can go on as long as they want. That's, that's what you're demonstrating again. That's very rude.
It is public comment, please, you are out of order. You are out of order.
Paul Perot. I think Commissioner Larkin misrepresented what I said. I am for giving funds to the senior citizens. I didn't mention the fire department, and I'm 100% for giving to the fire department. My objection is giving money to an organization that's 125 years old. Radnor Memorial Library is 125 years old. How come in 125 years, they haven't raised their own fund bases? Why aren't they funded after 125 years? Why are we giving them 900,000 a year? And why did we put 4.1 million dollars in that library? That's money we could have used for other services, stormwater. So the fact that this township put 4.5 million in that building is ridiculous. The fact that it, what, it came to like 7 million? That's half of what this building cost. If this building cost 15 million, the library is costing 7 million? That's ridiculous. And as far as parks, I'm fine for the parks, but to maintain them at a million 700 a year? That's, that's, that should be reduced. A million 700 a year to maintain parks? That's, that's not acceptable. I'm for the parks, but that maintenance needs to be shaved. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Preston Tyrell. I live on Oakford Road, and I'd like to say, first of all, I like your math and I like your fire company. I used to work for the fire company. I was an employee of the fire company, not the township. I'm getting no OPEB. I get nothing. All right? And I'm not here complaining about that. I just want to point out that if we don't fund the fire companies so they can sustain what they're doing, you're going to have an OPEB of a lot higher. Gentlemen over here is correct that if we go paid, full paid, the price is going way up. If the library cuts down its hours, I have the complete library here on my phone. Anything I need, I can get it. Won't cost me a dime. If my house catches on fire, I can't put it out with my phone. So I support you in upping the fire company. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor of ordinance 2018-17, adoption of the final comprehensive budget for 2019, setting the township real estate tax millage rates and adopting appropriations for 2019, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes four to three. Onto ordinance 2018-19, adoption of the consolidated fee schedule for the township effective January 1st, 2019. May I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Okay. Mr. White?
So the consolidated fee schedule is required by our charter, and what it does is it collects all the fees that are ordained throughout our code and consolidates them into one fee schedule. So what, well, part of our annual budgeting process is that we evaluate the fees and we adopt a brand-new fee schedule each year. And so that is what's in front of the board tonight. At the board's request in prior years, we include a current year versus next year comparison, highlight any differences, and include a little narrative on what those changes are. I believe we talked about those at the last meeting. There weren't many significant ones. So what, what was introduced at the last meeting was advertised, and it's up tonight for adoption. And it will be effective January 1st, 2019, not in 2018.
Any commissioner comment on the current motion on the floor?
Were there any changes to this document from the last, or exactly the same as it was?
This should be exactly the same. I, no, I think I just forwarded the same copy as soon as it was introduced, forwarded it on to John Rice's firm.
It's advertised November 30th.
Any commissioner comment?
Well, at the last meeting, the concern was the fines for building without a permit. And just seeing if that was changed. And you're confirmed that that was not changed. There is still a fine for people who forget or do not pull a permit.
Any additional commissioner comment? Any staff comment? Any public comment to the motion on the floor? All right, I will call the vote. All those in favor of ordinance 2018-19, adoption of the consolidated fee schedule for the township effective January 1st, 2019, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to one. Resolution 2018-143, adopting the wage and salary schedule for 2019. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Okay. Mr. White, is this you as well?
I will take it, sure. As it states in the resolution, section 6.01 of the charter states that compensation department heads administrative officers shall be fixed by the manager, subject to approval of the board. So part of this resolution is setting those wages for next year. Through prior agreements with our civilian labor group, the rate, rate collective bargaining group, and our Fraternal Order of Police collective bargaining group, the wage increases for 2019 are fixed and determined by those collectively bargained agreements. Going back to all the civilian non-union folks, there was an assumed two and three-quarter adjustment in there, or in the budget for those folks. Any increases for that classification employee will be based on performance evaluations and set by the manager, but it, it is up to two and three-quarters. In no cases shall any of those be higher, any increase be higher than the two and three-quarters, again, unless it's approved separately by the board. So again, to summarize, we have three classification... So, again, to summarize, we have three classification employees. For the rate union, it's two-and-three-quarters, and that was set by collective bargaining. For the Fraternal Order of Police, it's two-and-three-quarters, and that was set by collective bargaining. And then for all the non-union civilian employees, it'll be up to two-and-three-quarters, and will be based on performance at the discretion of the township manager.
Any commissioner comment to the motion on the floor? Any staff comment? Is there any public comment? All right. All those in favor of Resolution 2018-143, adopting the wage and salary schedule for 2019, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7, 0. All right, if everyone will indulge me, I am going to move items J and K up, because I know we have residents here who have been waiting, and I appreciate your patience, but we will go ahead and move J, is the residence here for J? Resolution 2018-136, 108 Harvard Lane, GP number 18176, requesting a waiver from Article 245, 22A to C2, minimum filtration requirement. Can I get a motion to approve?
So, second.
All right. Good evening. Mr. Narsini, do you want to introduce this, or?
Sure, thank you, Madam President. So our, our stormwater management ordinance requires that if a ground cannot meet the infiltration requirements that we require, the applicant is required to approach the board and request a waiver, and also, if possible, note that they have other best manager practices they will do in lieu of that. And so this is a project, grading permit 18176, Harvard Lane, number 108. This is a new house, so the new impervious proposed, total new impervious, house, walkways, sidewalks, pool, driveway is 5,304 square feet.
Thank you.
Mr. Patrick Spellman, engineer for the applicants here.
Good evening, thank you.
Good evening. So as Mr. Narsini said, we did some perk tests on the site, we were under, they basically failed, so what we wound up proposing is two rain gardens, slow-release concept rain gardens, one up in the upper corner here, one down in the lower corner of the property. And the object of these rain gardens is to provide the water quality amendment by running, excuse me, by, not a very good picture, basically running the water through amended soils to an underdrain which has a reduced orifice on it, slows the water down, gives it some time to attenuate through the soil that's there, and discharges. A DEP BMP is a slow-release concept. Any other questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Would the proposed rain gardens provide equal, better, or poorer flood mitigation than the infiltration that was originally required, contemplated?
They, they will provide, we'll say, equal, I mean, they still are releasing the water as opposed to infiltrating it, but the object of putting this half-inch orifice under here, we basically provide the same volume as the infiltration, we just slow it down so it's taking 72 hours to dissipate.
And does this improve, or how does this affect the existing conditions on the site?
I'm sorry, say that again, please.
How does this affect the existing conditions on the site? The net of both the added impervious and the rain gardens?
I'm sorry, say that again, how does it affect the existing conditions?
Yeah, well, I guess I should start with, what are the existing conditions?
Yeah, it's, it's, Harvard Lane is an overgrown lot, they were, they were subdivided in the 80s, they were cleared, and since then, it's just been left to vines and nuisance trees. So they will be clearing that out and building the house.
Okay, so it's somewhere between meadow conditions and forest conditions?
Yeah, yeah, well, yes, yes, I understand the question now, yes. So these were modeled as woods.
Okay.
So when, so when coming up with, we also providing these, these will also provide rate control, in addition to the infiltration control, because we are over the 1,500 square feet. So the conditions were, excuse me, modeled as meadow to develop what our peak release rate would be allowed.
Okay. And does this, like, like I asked before, does this improve or exacerbate the existing stormwater conditions on the site?
So we are meeting the rate controls, so we're actually reducing the discharge.
Commissioner, if I may add, so they, they're meeting all the requirements of the stormwater management, except for the groundwater infiltration portion, the volume reduction.
I understand from listening to the two of you, is an issue of where they're putting the water, not how fast the water's running off the site.
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, good evening, I'm Kristy Flynn, I'm with Rockwell, I'm also a Radnor resident. But I wanted to just add that this subdivision was originally developed late 70s, early 80s, it was improved, the road was built, there is a storm facility that was constructed. And back when that plan was approved, there were no on-lot storm facilities required at all, and basically the model was that the runoff from this part of the site would be undetained, and the storm facility would detain other off-site water that was entering, just because of the, the sort of topography of the site. So in this development, we are proposing to control all of the lot, all of the runoff from this lot, on each lot, each particular lot will, will maintain its own stormwater facilities on lot. So this is an improvement over what has, what was previously approved, had it been developed under that previous approval, if that helps to add a little color to where we are now.
So one of the claims that I've made in the past is that we, as a township, improve our stormwater management situation by having additional development. And one of the responses that I've run into to that is, well, we grant all of these exceptions, and if you're granting exceptions, then you're not actually improving the conditions based on development. And what I'm hearing is that although we are technically being asked to grant an exception today, we would still see an improvement based on the plan that you are proposing.
Yeah, and I, I'd say that that is true, and then the other piece of that is, of course, the, the point of the infiltration requirement is to infiltrate, continue to infiltrate water on a site where it is currently infiltrating. And because there is no infiltration on this particular place now, we certainly won't be making it worse by continuing to not infiltrate. So that, that's really what our request is this evening.
Okay, any additional commissioner questions?
Yeah, I think that sometimes that this board lives, especially the Democrat members in bizarro world, what Commissioner Larkin just said was, we improve stormwater by development. We improve our stormwater by development, by additional development, absolutely backwards, that's not, we heard earlier, we lower taxes by raising them. It's, it's, it's not, it's, this is nonsensical. Folks, this waiver hurts the stormwater and increases flooding in Radnor. It has to be infiltrated. If it didn't need to be infiltrated, then we would not need to have a waiver. The waiver is part of the requirement. They, they don't meet the requirement. If we are going to give a waiver, every time somebody comes up and says they can't meet the perk, we shouldn't have the infiltration requirement. So this board needs to really, really get behind the policy of what, what it is they're trying to do. When we build more buildings, we increase stormwater, we increase flooding. It's always going to be the case. When we require infiltration and then waive it, we are not helping the situation. If we are going to insist that we are doing better by allowing building, then let's give everybody the benefit and not make anybody infiltrate. It's, it doesn't make any sense to require infiltration and then to waive it every single time. This is an ongoing issue, and every single time that someone's come for a waiver, it's been granted. We, if you're not going to impose the requirement for infiltration, then we should eliminate it from the ordinance altogether and let people build what they want. At least then, you would make it a little bit easier for developers. You're going to increase flooding, you're going to hurt what you're supposedly trying to, to fix, but at least you'd make it easier for developers, and they might, they, they at least would like that.
Steve or Roger, I would like you to point out the parts of the stormwater ordinance that put us in this situation, and what the requirement is if we can't perk.
I don't have the ordinance in front of me, give me a minute to pull it up here. Roger?
Maybe while you're looking that up, I could just take a moment to clarify. The way in which development improves stormwater conditions is, obviously, you're taking a site that has poor stormwater conditions, because it was a building that was built in the 1960s, the 50s, the 40s. It's, for instance, a gas station which is entirely pavement, and it, the water just rolls right off of it. When you have a developer come in, then our stormwater ordinance requires that the development improves the conditions. So instead of having just an entire paved lot, or a warehouse, or a house with a lot of impervious cover, you have a site like this one, and many of the others that we've seen, that have stormwater management controls. So over time, we're replacing existing lots with lots, existing poorly-developed stormwater lots, with lots that are better engineered for stormwater. And then when that lot eventually gets replaced, 20 years later, because technology has improved, you're able to get an even better situation. I would be strongly opposed to a situation where a waiver meant that we were just going to say, hey, don't worry about it, don't do anything, the ground doesn't perk, just leave it alone, you can build whatever you want. That, that, that would not improve things. But if, as I'm being told by the applicant, by the township engineer, by everybody who's competent to comment on this plan, that this plan improves existing conditions stormwater-wise, and that the plan, that the exception that is requested complies with our ordinance, and that the plan as proposed is no better or worse than what the ordinance contemplates as round one, because the ordinance is pretty clear, you can come to the board for an exception. I, I don't know why you would imagine that development like that, positive development, would be bad for stormwater, I just, it just seems like a math problem.
If, if we want to infiltrate the stormwater and improve the conditions, reduce flooding, development and waivers do not do that. If you are going to provide a waiver, let's get rid of the infiltration requirement in the stormwater ordinance, and let everybody avail themselves of not having to infiltrate. This does not improve stormwater, it's a, it's a meadow or a woods right now, you're now putting 5,000 square feet of impervious. You're detaining it in ponds on the site, it's not improving the stormwater, all that water is going into the same stormwater at a slower rate over a longer period of time. The point of the ordinance is to infiltrate it, we are giving waivers willy-nilly on this, we may as well forego the requirement, because it's meaningless. I think it's a poor policy choice, but that is what you seem to be advocating for.
Well, I just.
Mr. Nagel, I'm ready when you are.
Engineer, so.
Go ahead, Roger.
What was the, what was the question again, I'm sorry?
I wanted to make sure that we were very clear on what the requirements of the ordinance was, when you can't infiltrate, and as I understand it, it, it gives the applicant the opportunity to ask for an exception and provide alternate means of dealing with the water.
Correct. Section 405 of the ordinance is groundwater recharge, and in Section 405, it states, if a minimum of .5 inch of infiltration requirement cannot be achieved, a waiver from Section 405 groundwater recharge will be required from the municipality. So that, that's where it allows you, and the ordinance recognizes that if, you know, it's, it just comes down to science, some properties infiltrate, some don't. So this gives you the, the method of which they need to come in here and ask for the waiver, for properties that cannot infiltrate.
What are the alternative means?
There are no alternatives listed in here specifically. What we do is we ask the applicants to, to do something to offset that, which is typically a rain garden, or, or one of the BMPs, as, as we discussed earlier. And again, Steve said this earlier, this is only one portion of a big ordinance that they're meeting, and this is the only, only portion that they are not able to meet, and the ordinance requires them to come in front of you.
Thank you.
So I, I agree with Rich on this, every single time this comes up, the applicants sit here for three hours sometime, we've gotten to people at 11 o'clock at night after they've listened to us drone on about what we drone on and on about. Can we, is there some way we can make this administrative? I feel bad for these people, they sit here and have to listen to us, all to come up here, we always vote for it, we always.
I, I can add.
Rich makes his point, I get it, and then we talk about stormwater, and it spirals out of control. Can we make it administrative? I'm tired of dealing with this issue, and we say the same thing every single time.
That would, that would be up to this board, I can tell you, prior to me being engaged by the township as the township engineer.
Sure.
That decision was made in the back office, but when you read the letter of the ordinance, it says, "Come to the board," it doesn't say, "Handle it administratively," so that would be a simple change.
Right, and I'm not blaming you, Roger, you're doing, you're, you're doing your job. Next meeting, please, put something on the agenda about this.
You're going to have to amend the ordinance.
Please, wait, can we have something, I'm making the request as a commissioner in public, I would like an amendment to the ordinance to make this administrative. I'm tired of this discussion, every single time. This is a simple waiver, and we're, what, we're half hour on this almost? This is unnecessary, and every single time we get the same speech, Rich, I, I get it, I get what you're coming from, but enough, enough already. It doesn't perk, we grant it, I'm tired of this, so please, John, please put something.
Roger, other than the infiltration requirements, what other waivers would come before the board, other than infiltration? I mean, that seems to be.
What other waivers for what?
Waivers.
For stormwater?
Of the stormwater ordinance.
Whatever else they would choose to request, but we typically don't have any requests for any other portions of the stormwater ordinance.
Just the infiltration, hot water table.
Correct.
Bad soil.
Everything else, they either meet it, or they don't, if they don't, they don't do their project.
Okay.
That's how it's always been handled.
We'll bring something back.
Bring something back, let's, let's, let's get it out to the public.
Please, thank you.
Get it out to the public, let them comment on that.
Okay, is there any other comment to the, this particular motion that is on the floor? Any staff comment? Is there any public comment?
This is the real reason why I'm here, the fire company, it was just by accident.
Okay, well, please, come speak.
Steve's been in my backyard how many times? Many, how muddy is my backyard? Quite muddy, all right? By the way, I don't live near this house, but instead of the water going into the ground, it's now getting funneled out, I bet you it's going to end up in my backyard, and I live on the other side of town. My complaint is that I can go on the other side there, I can get a $40 grading permit, and I can grade my backyard and screw my neighbors, so all the water now goes onto my neighbor's yard, which, you have come to my backyard, and you said, "It's all my neighbor's grading." By the way, there's my other neighbor, luckily, he's about six inches less than me, lower, so he has a worse yard than I do. So if the, you, water isn't going into the ground, you can't send it somewhere else, it's not fair to the people that live at the low end. And I don't know what else to say. Then you come to my backyard, don't wear nice shoes, because they're going to get ruined, all right? And I think a few other people here have been to my backyard, they kind of look familiar. I welcome you to come to my backyard, I welcome you to come to Jeff's backyard, it's below freezing right now, bring your ice skates, because we can skate on it. That's how much water it is. So I would be against approving this, even though it's nowhere near me, approving things like it, and not letting people come to the board. I think, they, over there, they collect the $40 for your fee, and they don't give too much care, they're not engineers.
I think they do.
Easy engineer.
I think they do.
What?
You'll get more pushback than from us.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just to say, so...
I think.
When you come in for, when you come in for a grading permit, I guess first and foremost, it's definitely not $40, because there's...
It's $40 per ton when I do.
Yeah, for a review, but these are the things we look at, whether there's a topo and what's going on. So that's what we do. Our intent with anything is to not make it worse for somebody.
And none of us, by the way, Commissioner Nagel is an engineer, but that's it. We're not, no engineers up here besides Commissioner Nagel, so.
I have a bachelor's degree in engineering.
Well, there you go.
All right. Do you have anything else?
No, but when you talk about West Wayne, we'll be back up again for the next thing, so.
All right, great.
All right.
Thank you, thank you very much. Any other additional public comment? All right, I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2018-136, 108 Harvard Lane, GP 18176, requesting a waiver from section 245-22 dot A to C2, minimum filtration, infiltration requirement, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes seven to one, or six to one.
Nothing personal against the, it's just the policy, policy issue.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Good night.
Okay, let's do the next one.
Okay. Resolution, Resolution 2018... Resolution 2018-137, 12 Meadowwood Road, GP 18-178, requesting a waiver from section 245-22A to C2, minimum infiltration requirement. Good evening, thank you.
Good evening.
All right, should we get a motion out there? I'll move for the passage of Resolution 2018-137.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Peter Kekonas. I work for Site Engineering Concepts. This is 12 Meadowwood Lane. The owners, the Kekonis, would like to put a rear patio onto the property, as well as a shed, and they want to square off the end of their driveway. It's about 700... Sorry. It's a, okay. Sorry, it's about 735 square feet. Per the ordinance, the only requirement for stormwater is groundwater recharge. We had our geologists go out and test. As you can see, actually, I'll point at the plan.
This line, right here at the edge of...
That's all right. I lost the pointer. Okay, anyway, my apologies.
At the edge of the patio is a flood plain.
And when we tested, we had groundwater and clays, and there's no infiltration. So that's why we're asking for a waiver. In lieu of that, we are proposing a rain barrel, which would collect roof water runoff that could be used for irrigating plantings or just slow release, and whatever homeowner wanted to use for it, so.
Mr. Norrisi, do you have any, I didn't give you the opportunity to introduce this, and I apologize.
This is different than the last one. In the last one, that's what we call stormwater management. There's many facets to it, and the applicant met all those facets except one. This is different. This falls to the 501 square feet to 1,499 square foot of new impervious, which essentially is where you come out, you do infiltration testing, and based on your new impervious and one inch of rain, you install a pit, whether it be with stone or another mechanism. That's the only requirement at 501 square feet to 1,499 square feet. So these folks did their perk test, their infiltration test. They do not meet our requirements. Therefore, that pit would be rendered useless due to the groundwater and the groundwater level and the fact that the ground does not infiltrate. So if they dug this pit, it would just be full of water and it would be useless. So they're coming, as required by the ordinance, as Roger pointed out, they're coming to this board to request a waiver, and they're saying, okay, we can't do that. We're asking if we could do a rain barrel in lieu of that, due to the size of this project, the impervious. So 735 square feet versus 5,000 some square feet on the last project.
Okay, any commissioner comment on this?
Just one question. Was this land recently subdivided within the last year? I know there was a land on, a property on Meadowwood.
No, not, not...
Change, you remember that? No?
It's a pretty small property.
So that's not this property? Okay.
Any...
Yes, so again, this is the same issue. We, obviously, this board made a mistake in adopting an ordinance that required infiltration. My understanding was it was something that was really wanted by the constituents, and this board put in place an ordinance requiring infiltration. But yet, every single time, somebody, they can't perk, we give them a waiver. Again, every time we give a waiver, we make the stormwater and the flooding a little bit worse. And you go, oh, no, it's not true, Rich, it's not true. It is true. It always gets a little bit worse, and this is the accumulation of 120 years of a little bit, a little bit, and a little bit at a time. Until we get a handle on this, until we get the infiltration, until we start permanently recharging the groundwater instead of putting it on the surface, we're going to continue to have more problems in Wayne. And again, it's not a matter of this particular developer, this particular owner, it's the homeowners, that they shouldn't have to comply with this. If we're not going to require groundwater recharge or infiltration, then we shouldn't require it for anybody. Give everybody the break. We should take, we should admit that you made a mistake in adopting it.
Commissioner Booker, if I may, this is groundwater recharge is volume reduction.
But, no, but Steve, Steve, I understand, I hear you.
And there's less than 10% of the grading permits that come in here that require this waiver. We're on line to do 200 grading permits this year, and I don't think we've been before this board with maybe 10 or 12. So it's a very small fraction of these grading permits that require this. Groundwater infiltration is volume reduction. It's something that we should do, something that we're required to do. Our ordinance does allow folks to come to this board for that request, but I would respectfully request that we would not pull volume reduction groundwater recharge from our ordinance. It's, like I say, I think it's less than, I'll say, 5 or 7% that actually come to this board out of all our grading permits.
Well, if it's that minor, then why do we need to vote, have a waiver? So I look at it differently. Steve, this is a policy issue. The board, before I came on the board, required this in the stormwater ordinance. I probably would not have voted for that. I would have been, once again, six to one. Don't do it. Rich Booker, let the developers not have to worry about that. But that's not what happened. They voted for it before I was a part of it. Now we have it. The reason we have it is so that we can, if this board chooses, to not allow any more development, to not make things worse. Every time we grant a waiver, we're making it a little bit worse. If it's a minor, just so minor, a number of applications, then why do we grant a waiver every single time? If it's so minor, we shouldn't grant a waiver, comply with the ordinance. Everyone else does. I disagree with that. As Luke noted, we have tens and tens of these. They come before us time after time after time after time. And then we have the other side of it, which we have the constituents screaming that the stormwater is, oh, out of control in Wayne, out of control in these areas, and what are you doing? We're approving more development. It's only making it worse. So this board either should change the ordinance, if you're gonna waive it every time, waive it for everybody, or enforce it. And again, it's the same situation. We're making things worse, we're not making things better. And people's yards are covered with water, and there are ice skating rinks, and this just makes it worse.
Okay, any additional commissioner comment on this?
Well, I'm not inclined to approve this waiver, but not for the reasons Rich cited. I don't believe that there's an honest attempt to provide some stormwater management on the site, and I think the applicant should meet with staff and come up with something.
Well, what's staff's position on this, that it doesn't perk? I mean, is that, I mean, if it doesn't, it doesn't, right? So...
So I guess what Commissioner Nagel's talking about, there's other options, whether it be, so we have one rain barrel, maybe there's more rain barrels. Is it, Mr. Kekonas, could there be a rain garden or something along that? I think that's what the commissioner's saying, that you have options, could you do more than a single rain barrel? Do you have the ability to do a rain garden of some sort?
A rain garden would drain.
I mean, with amended soils to a point?
Can we, well, hold on. Can we, instead of doing this, is this something we could table next week? Our last meeting's next week, it's seven days away. Is that prejudicial to you all if you were to come back then after talking with staff to nail something down?
They have to pay their engineer hundreds of dollars every time he comes back.
We'll put him at the, we'll put him, we'll call him first. I mean, you know, I don't want people to sit around. I don't know. Instead of going through this now, going through engineering in front of everybody at 9:00 at night.
Do you, is the, are the owners here, Mr. Kekonas? So the commissioner's asking if we could meet between now and Friday, come up with a possible alternative, and come back to this board on Monday. So that's what the question is.
Come up, come up. It is your decision.
I've been waiting here for two and a half hours, and options were given to us, the rain garden or two barrels. I didn't know that this would occur, or else we would have had this meeting previously. So now, you saw my two young kids here, so we're gonna have to come here, you know, again.
One of the commissioners is asking that.
If I could also, sorry, if I could, I apologize. We did contact staff to ask them, you know, what we could do, and they said that we could add a rain barrel, and that's what we did. But again...
All right. Yeah, I mean, it's probably something we can just deal with now. Let's just vote on it.
Well, can I ask a quick question? Have you spoken to your neighbors? Do they have any complaints, concerns? I know that you're not sending them letters. Any feedback one way or the other?
They're pretty nice. We'd be more than willing to do that. That was not a question. Sorry. I don't really like being in the center of attention. They're very nice people. We'd be more than willing to do that. We didn't know that was something we had to do.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that you have to do it. No, no, no. I'm saying, have you spoken to them about what...
They know that we're gonna do a patio, but we didn't talk about the logistics of a rain garden or rain barrels.
Any negative feedback?
No. No.
Okay. Is there any additional commissioner comment on this? Is there any staff comment?
Madam President, if I may, just so everyone knows, it is a state requirement that this has to go through the process and for the various permits that have to be gotten. The township, again, because of soil conditions, some cannot perk, and I think the waiver that the board is granting is actually coming up with something that will retain water on the property. Is it going to detain, you know, is it going to keep it on there fully? There have been a lot of projects that have helped stormwater management, and development does improve stormwater management. It's fact, so I don't want to disagree, but it does improve. So I think these types of projects, the waiver you're granting, you're seeing what they're doing to try to control water, and I think that's why it's come here. So they're making attempts to make the stormwater runoff better.
Okay, thank you. Any additional staff comment? All right, I'll go ahead and call for...
No, no, there's a comment, right, public comment.
I'm calling for public comment. If you don't mind, thank you. I can see Sarah standing back there motioning. Thank you.
Sarah Pillling, 29 Garrett Avenue. I have three rain barrels at my house because my soil doesn't perk either. But my rain barrels are connected to soaker hoses, and they wind through the garden, and I never have to water, and the water doesn't go anywhere. Eventually, it goes into the ground, because the plants' roots soak it up. So a couple of rain barrels, and there's some very attractive ones now, could take care of their problem very easily. It's nice not to have to water your garden in the summer.
Thank you, Sarah. Any additional public comments? Okay, duly noted. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna call the vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2018-137, 12 Meadowwood Road, GP 18-178, requesting a waiver from section 24, 245-22A to C2, minimum infiltration requirement, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Jake, how did you vote on it? Okay, a motion passes four to three. Thank you very much, and thank you for waiting. We appreciate your patience. Yes, thank you. Okay.
I was gonna say barely passed over a rain barrel.
Now, we are going to go back to Commissioner Abel. Do you still want to make, say something about item E, which has been already scratched from the agenda, but...
I do. So originally, we had an item on the agenda. It was agricultural risk management of trees in West Wayne Preserve, and it has been polled, but I would just like to get clarification. A number of residents have reached out and asked on this issue, what was this item intending to do?
Madam President, this was to address there are trees that have been identified by the arborist that are in hazardous conditions, and it's for their removal, and because the expense is over my spend, my allowing allowance of $7,500, it would come in front of the board for approval.
Where are the trees located? Are they in the preserve?
They are in the preserve.
Right, and, I mean, residents don't walk back in the preserve.
I didn't think so until a while ago, where I did have people say they were walking, but that was one of the questions, I know, when we spoke, that John Hosbeck was going to look at all those again, re-review his notes again, whether some can just fall naturally within the area that would create that natural habitat, or there's some that have to be removed, that I think there's some that might fall towards the trail, and I think those would be the ones. But John's gonna relook at that again. We'll probably bring this back in front of the board sometime January, early February, for you to revisit, and John will have a lot more detail for you.
Well, before it comes before the board, yeah, I'd like to make the request that it would go to Parks and Rec and have them address this issue, because I, you know, if we're doing it at West Wayne Preserve, I think we're gonna have to look at all other parks where we have forested tree areas.
We can do that.
Commissioner, we do go through parks annually. You may remember, a couple of years ago, we had a sizable amount removed from Harford Park that they were deemed hazardous by the arborist. Same thing happened at Clem McCrone. So usually, the arborist goes through our parks once a year. Some years, it's one or two trees, but other years, and I'm not familiar with this exact situation, but it does occur.
I understand that, and I appreciate it. What I would like to get to is, you know, a process where, you know, we just, on Wednesday, when we get our packet, I don't see an item that's risk management, tree removal at West Wayne Preserve, and I don't know what the issue is, and no resident knows what the issue is. So if there's a process where the issue can be explained, there can be debate, and then a decision made before we come and talk about it for 20 minutes and we have to make a decision, you know, right then.
Understood.
I think that's a better public process.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance 2018-15, discussion impossible introduction enacting a new Chapter 176 hazardous accident reimbursement, authorizing the collection of and the reimbursement of township and fire department cost of response and cleanup after transportation environmental or industrial accidents. So, Mr. Rice.
As a board, we'll recall, there was, there's been discussion about, there's been discussion about the damage that's been done to the bridge, and trucks getting stuck in the bridge, and then the response time, fire company, et cetera. We had talked about just fining people that damaged bridge or damaged township property.
Right, just a large fine, thousands, a couple thousand, whatever it is.
Can we let, can we let Mr. Rice finish, please?
Does that, does this do that?
What this does is requires reimbursement to the township and the fire company to respond to hazardous incidents, which would include a bridge strike. Much more than a $1,000 fine would be involved here. This came out of another municipality where the fire department had come to the township and in Montgomery County and basically asked for authorization, not for the township to collect it, but authorization for them to recoup their costs when they responded to a chemical spill, a bridge accident, damage to the township roads, and the fire company was involved. So this gives the fire, there's two parts of this. Talk about the fire company part first. the fire company part first. This gives the fire company the ability to then go to the responsible party and be reimbursed for whatever equipment, time, and efforts that they put into it. If whoever the responsible party is doesn't pay, then the ordinance permits the township to cite that responsible party. We're not gonna, I don't recommend the township getting into collection for the fire company, but this gives them the first shot at reimbursement when there's a hazardous incident in the township. Similarly, same with the township and the police department. There's not reimbursement for your fender benders, things like that, or normal police patrols. There's gotta be a hazardous incident or an accident that damages township property and causes a major response. That's what this ordinance does. And it would include the bridge strikes, Rich. I mean, I don't know what the cost of response to that is for fire company and the township, but I think it's gonna be in excess of $1,000. You know, to fine somebody under a local ordinance, it's usually $1,000, and that's all you get. You end up going to District Justice Court, and you may or may not get $1,000. It's not a efficient way to get reimbursement or to get compliance with that particular situation. This is a little bit broader. This ordinance is broader than that. It's a tool for the fire company. It's a tool for the township to recoup their costs when they're responding to a hazardous situation in the township on the roads. So, it's, this is not something I just invented. This is something that's on the books in a couple other municipalities. It originated from a fire company who came through the municipality, it's Lower Providence in Montgomery County. They came to the township and presented this to them and wanted that authorization to recover some of their costs. It's been enacted at least in a handful of municipalities that I'm aware of, in Montgomery County. I'm not sure Delaware County. So, that's up for board discussion. It's up for introduction, if you want to introduce it, and I'm ready to answer any questions.
John, has that been challenged in court yet?
No.
Is there new enough?
It's, John, this has been around three or four years, and what I don't know is how successful the fire companies have been in getting payment, but it's backed up by the township ordinance. It's not just the fire companies going there.
Right.
If it's a legitimate expense, it meets the definition of a hazardous accident, and the responsible party doesn't pay, then the township could get in and cite the responsible party for not complying with the ordinance.
John, before you were solicitor here, the board passed an ordinance to recoup costs when police and fire and Public Works responded to accidents. Shortly thereafter, the State House in Pennsylvania passed a law that forbade that.
Governor Rendell.
Right. Is there, and actually, it was one of Radnor's representatives that introduced it.
Right. Yeah, I'm aware.
Is this enough different?
I, John, I think, I think it is. I'm familiar with that because it came up a few years ago, and I did a little bit of research. I mean, the township is trying to pass through its normal day-to-day law enforcement costs. I mean, this is, this has to be triggered by an accident, an accident, a hazardous situation in the township. It's not a fender bender. It's not, you know, something minor that happens with the, with the police department. It's gotta be a significant event that requires this kind of response. I mean, I'm comfortable that it's sufficiently different from that situation, and I'm familiar with what happened at the time, that, you know, this is triggered by a, again, a hazardous situation or a serious accident that damages public property.
Madam President, if I may, just to add that, we've got, the last incident that occurred up on King of Prussia Road, where the concrete truck, which was empty, going from a King of Prussia project to their home base, struck the bridge, basically, just sheer stupidity of not knowing that this big concrete truck is not making it under the bridge. When we look at the amount of resources that were on site, and Steve and I were up there at that time, you had Radnor Fire Company there, you had Radnor Police, you had a, I believe there was a second call, or maybe it was a previous bridge strike where there was a second call, where you're utilizing every piece of township resource between the fire department, between Public Works trying to shut off roads, police trying to reroute traffic. It is very expensive, and you're diverting our resources from situations of car accidents or emergency responses to our residents for something that is a continual issue that PennDOT, Amtrak, and SEPTA refuse to address. So, it's something where I think this is good, that this is being introduced, and John, to your concern about the challenge, which is, which is good. It's just, I think I like our chances in this one because there's enough photographic evidence that 110 bridge strikes over the last 10 years is excessive in one particular bridge, and we can't even talk about all the other situations that we're responding to as well in this.
So, this addresses recuperating the cost, but does it get us any closer to stopping the strikes?
It doesn't, but we had a conversation last week with Delaware Planning Commission. We are hoping to invite for next Monday's meeting representatives from PennDOT, SEPTA, the state police, Amtrak, and our state representatives to attend a meeting here with the Board of Commissioners to ask, why should the township subsidize any improvements to their particular properties when they've turned a blind eye to us, and the situations are only getting worse? If there was, God forbid, someone was walking under that bridge, they would have been killed. You've got an I-beam that sits suspended in there now to protect the bridge that Amtrak refused to address. You've got Pico power lines that run underneath that bridge that were close to being pinched off, which could have created another situation there. So, there are multiple issues that we're hoping that people will address and step up instead of Radnor Township, which Amtrak would love to have us, or PennDOT would love us to spend $250,000, $500,000, a million dollars to help solve their issue.
So, on the Jersey Barrier pedestrian walkway, is that, what's the status of that?
We, I think, we're on the clock with them, so if we do not get any response from Amtrak, then the township will go ahead and remove that pedestrian walkway that's underneath the bridge. And it came to my attention last week that actually, there was no accident reported, but one of the refrigeration units off a truck actually had broken off. The truck kept going, but the refrigeration unit was sitting in that sidewalk that we had to go remove. So, that wasn't even a reported strike, that what happened. So, it is a hazard, and we are on the clock with that. And Steve, I'm not sure, are we close to a week away from that?
I think, I think we're probably down to a few days, sir, that we, we don't, they've had it, it was overnighted, so they've had it since, I guess they've had it for a week and a couple days.
So, I think probably on the 17th, the next meeting a week from tonight, we'll report to the board where we're at with then beginning to that process.
Well, in my opinion, the sooner the better, that we can remove that and provide a safer atmosphere for pedestrians. Second question, Commissioner Booker always talks about the height, the signage for height restrictions being yellow, and they should be white. Is that accurate, and is that being addressed?
Our Public Works Director, Steve McNellis, is working with a contact that Commissioner Booker had given, that he spoke to someone from PennDOT that said we should, we could change the colors to red. The sign manufacturers refused to produce those for us because they said they violate PennDOT regulations and requirements. So, we are now trying to sort out who's right and who's telling us the right information, because we can have those made up immediately in wood. It's just we're told that the sign company says, we will not make something that is illegal.
Just a couple of questions here. Who makes the determination of what a hazmat is? Is that the police? Is that Steve, you know, McNellis, or Norsini, if they come out there? Who would make that final determination?
There's a definition in the ordinance. So, if it meets that definition, hazardous accident, under the definition...
This seems very vague to me. I mean, we all know what it is, but it just seems vague in that there should be someone that would take ownership of what that definition is.
I think the township's gonna make that determination.
Okay, any, no specific office in the township, police versus engineer? No? Bob? Okay.
In consultation with the police chief, and emergency management coordinator, and probably myself, but...
When it comes, okay, when it comes to the fines, you said $1,000 is the limit? You can't do like per police car or per fire truck, per hour plus physical damage? It's only a straight $1,000 fine? Because when these things damage, you said it's, $1,000 is the maximum?
In a violation of an ordinance, but this, there's two steps in this ordinance. One is, once the incident happens and costs are expended, then a bill then goes to the responsible party, from the township or the fire company. There's no, there's no citation yet or anything because of the accident unless there's some separate violation of the traffic vehicle code.
So...
If that bill doesn't get paid within 30 days, then you get cited under this ordinance.
For $1,000 more, or?
More. Well, up to $1,000. When you cite somebody showing under an ordinance, we have to file a non-traffic citation in District Justice Court. That gets scheduled for a hearing. You go in front of the District Justice. You present the evidence of violation of the ordinance, and you can get up to $1,000 for a fine, which is not a real incentive for the types of situations that we're dealing here with.
So, if there's an accident, and the cost to the township is $10,000 to clean up, what are we, what are we gonna...
That's the reimbursement. That's the bill that goes out.
That's the bill for $10,000?
That goes out.
Plus $1,000 if they don't pay it within 30 days?
If they don't pay the bill, then they get cited.
Okay.
So, I'm looking at the definitions, and I recognize the virtue of using an ordinance that other townships have used, but this does seem really, really broad to me, because we're defining a hazardous accident as any incident that occurs during the storage, transportation, use, and/or manufacturing of any material, which is a defined term, resulting in an accident which is and/or results in a danger to, a threat to, and/or possible harm to the public health, safety, and welfare. And then it necessitates either the intervention of the fire company, the police, the Public Works Department, or any Radnor Township employee or consultant. And the problem with that is that material is defined as any substance, chemical, fuel, equipment, product, item, merchandise, or other good. So, that just includes air, because that's a substance. So, really, you're just left with if, while you're transporting air, which we all do all the time in our lungs, you cause an accident which is a threat to the public health, safety, and welfare that requires the intervention of the police. I mean, why would this not just be arguably a regular old traffic accident? Could we...
I think, I think this is also involves, let's say, one of the universities have a, in one of their labs have a hazmat spill within there. Yes, there was one. That was a massive turnout by the fire department.
Sure.
And that would fall within this category. That's a non-traffic accident.
That would definitely fall within the category of any substance. It's just that the term "material" is so broad because it says literally "any substance" or "other good." I'm wondering whether we don't want to tighten that up a little bit in order to avoid a void-for-vagueness challenge. I'd love to leave it this broad. I think that it's great if it's this broad. I want to have the authority to pass our costs on for exactly the reasons that we're hearing about, about the fire company. The fire company is able to pass its costs on to the people who do easily avoidable things, like driving trucks into bridges. I think that's great. I just want to make sure that this doesn't have a vagueness challenge.
We define the word "material," but anybody that's driving around in the township is carrying something other than air. They're carrying equipment. They're carrying other vehicles. They're carrying stone. They're carrying mulch. They're carrying, you know, so that's why I think probably that's as broad as it is. And you're trying to pick up every possible scenario, you know, with someone that might be traveling, or transporting, or using, or manufacturing. So, I mean, we can certainly take another look at the definition of "material." Any suggestions would be, would be welcome.
Definition of "material," couldn't we just cut out the issue of transporting anything and say, if you cause an accident...
Involved in an accident which hazardous materials involved?
No, not even hazardous materials. If you cause an accident that results in a danger to the public health, safety, and welfare, or does that run into the problem that John Nagel was talking about before?
Well, if you take, if you take "material" out of the definition of hazardous accident, then you have any incident that occurs during storage?
No, just any incident that occurs resulting in an accident which is and/or results in a danger to, a threat to, and/or possible harm to the public health, safety, and welfare, and necessitates intervention, et cetera.
I would argue that that's way too broad and void for vagueness, that.
It just feels like the two are the same to me, because "material" is so broad.
If I could just add, I think one of the items that we would want to capture is, we have a lot of gas work that's being done in the township, and during some of these repairs, I know myself, Steve, and the fire department have responded, and police, to odors of air and gas coming up out of lines that have actually registered higher numbers, and it'll be something to go back after contractors for sloppy work, neglect of work, or allowing gas to flow through abandoned lines that are still, per se, active, where residents are picking this up strong enough in their homes, and then on response, you know, again, fires responding folks, they should be able to get reimbursed for rolling apparatus for a contractor's issue pertaining to gas, or even electric. Look what we've had on North Wayne, underground fires just last week again. That should be something, we should be able to go back after reimbursement for those types of negligent-type activities.
Well, hold on, let me, before we get to public. So, I raised this issue several months ago. It was a very narrowly tailored request that we have within our schedule of fees, an increased fine for trucks that hit the bridge. So, why not do something very specific and have a specific $5,000 or $2,000 fine for trucks that hit a bridge in King of, King of Prussia Road or other bridges?
I still think you need to have some basis to find someone.
Well, the basis would be because of the police activity, so it would be, it would be commensurate with the police response.
I mean, you need an ordinance, I mean, when you, when you find somebody for a parking violation, you have a parking ordinance which says between, you know, this corner and this corner, it's a no parking zone. It's on the books. There's something in writing, and you can send a fine to the person if they refuse to pay it. They have the right to go to District Justice Court and contest it. You can't just put in your fee schedule, "We're fining you if you hit our bridge."
All right, so we, so let's, so why not have an ordinance that's, why not have an ordinance that's narrowly tailored to say, "You are subject to a special assessment for trucks that hit a bridge in Radnor?" Instead of, and I agree with your arguments with Commissioner Larkin and you talking about the vagueness. I think that that's a legitimate concern. So, why not narrowly tailor the ordinance to apply to motor transport vehicles, trucks, however you define it, that hit bridges? I think that that's what, the purpose was to deter truckers from hitting the bridges. That, so, that was the narrow tailor. This is very broad, so I, first, I want to just ensure that I understand, if we can't do it, why we can't do it that way.
Well, because I think you still have to set up a, you still have to establish an ordinance which says, "If you hit our bridge, you're subject to a fine up to $1,000."
And not $5,000?
That, that would be an unusual local ordinance, but let's say it's $5,000. Let's say it's $10,000. Let's say it's $10,000, and it's only a $500, $500 of damage. Either way, you still gotta write a citation and go to District Justice Court.
Well, and I guess in this case, it wouldn't really be damage, would it? Because it's a bridge.
Because when you find somebody, that person has the right to contest the fine. So, the way they contest it is in front of District Justice Court. So the way they contest it is in front of District Justice Court. Which I, which I find for penalties is not a real effective way to deal with ordinance violations. I mean, Kevin's not here, but you all know how many property maintenance issues we have in this township where we go to District Justice Court, there's a $250 or $500 fine, and nothing happens to the building that's in disrepair. Until we get into county court and we have significant leverage and a judge who lets us do more than just find the person. So, I mean, I understand what the original reason was, was just to target people that are hitting the bridge, but, you know, this ordinance, I think, gives you more than, than the fine. Gives you reimbursement to the people that are actually, you know, expending their time and effort and taxpayer dollars to recoup that. I think that's as much of incentive as a fine.
I, I agree with you that that's probably what it does, but that's broader.
And I'm not sure you can exceed $1,000 per incident.
So basically...
But I'll look at that. I don't think you can?
Well, I need to be able to respond to my constituency. And this, this is the issue. Can't we fine them for $5,000 for hitting the bridge? And what I'm hearing is that, no, we really can't fine more than over $1,000. And even if we did, the, the way you tailor the ordinance, but why couldn't we still have the ordinance be just for hit the trucks hitting the bridge? We could do that, you're saying?
You could do that, but I, I'm not sure you're going to get over $1,000 fine as a penalty in an ordinance, in a local ordinance like that. There's limits on, you know, how much you can fine somebody. And, and again, I mean, District Justices do a great job. But for effective fines and penalties, doesn't happen there very often. It just doesn't happen. It doesn't get, you know, the desired result. Under, I think under the first-class township code, you can only fine up to $1,000 a day.
Secondly, on this, it's so broad that you could have a passenger car or somebody who's a township resident could end up causing an accident with a truck. And then that, that individual might be on the hook for all of the police and fire as, as causing the accident.
If it's a hazardous accident, as defined.
As defined. And again, this wasn't intended to possibly fine thousands of dollars to any individual constituent. It was narrowly tailored to, to provide an additional deterrent from stopping people from hitting the bridge specifically. And to fine them an amount that would be commensurate with the response that was given. And usually it's police that go to the bridge.
Well, but your, your concern is still there. If you, if you narrow it to just people running into bridges, residents might be running into bridges in their trucks.
Well, that's probably willing, that's probably one where we're willing to take that risk. But it's, if a trucker hitting the bridge, that would be it. What we don't want to do is to start penalizing our residents for any accident that occurs, whether it be their fault. We want it to be very narrow. So can you take this and make it as narrow as you can get this? What I would ask is that we make it as narrow as we possibly can to focus on the bridge issue. That was the intent. And not, not to be a catch-all for anybody that gets in any accident that we, somebody deems hazardous, whether it be, whoever it might be.
I can narrow it as much as you want to narrow it.
That would be my preference because that's, that's what we're, we're looking for. And also, on, on the sidewalk underneath that bridge, I, Steve, I'd asked for a copy of what you sent. My, the people in the second ward are not 100% behind. There's, there's, there's no consensus amongst my constituents to remove that sidewalk. So we need to have some more public discussion. This is the first time we're really saying that at a meeting. We need to bring that forward and give people, maybe even have a special meeting on that so people are aware and have a chance to, to provide their input. Because it's, it's not universally accepted amongst my neighborhoods that we should remove that, that crosswalk. What we prefer to have is no trucks hitting the bridge. So I, I understand this ordinance. I, I am concerned also that it's too vague and too broad and that it's going to pick up accidents that was not my original intent. That's my concern with it.
All right.
Seems like we got some work to do on this.
Yeah. Do we want to, so John, you, you think you understand? Did we have some public comment? Did you want to?
I'm here for the water. I'm here for the water. Actually, believe it or not, I've actually hit a bridge with a truck. All right. To be perfectly honest with you, it was your fire truck. All right? That was many years ago. But this here doesn't say "bridge." This says "fire company response." All right? For what a hazardous material is. Compressed air is a hazardous material. I have the MSDS sheet right here. That's actually a text from my wife. I have the MSDS sheet right here. So compressed air is a hazardous substance. And if you've ever seen a compressed air tube canister go up, you would understand why. And by the way, I did this without going to the library. So, from someone who has spent many a night on the side of the road because a small pool company has had chemicals in the back that have fallen off and accidentally mixed together, hazardous materials isn't cement trucks underneath the bridge. Hazardous materials is stuff bubbling on the ground. Hazardous materials is something that requires you to walk to everyone's house at 2:00 in the morning and say, "Is anybody here feeling nauseous?" And doing all that. That's what hazardous materials is. That's what I thought this was for. Of course, I haven't read it yet in all honesty. But it doesn't say "bridge repair" in here at all. So... And if you let the fire company bill for their services, you wouldn't have to give them as much money for their OPA, whatever it is.
What, also, does it say in there township property or any property? Because remember, the, the bridge is not township property.
No, no. From what I understand, if I'm driving my gasoline truck and I fell over under your front yard and require him to spend the entire night on the road, that he gets paid for my gasoline truck in your front yard? Is that not what this is?
I, I thought it said township property.
It does. It says damages to any township-owned infrastructure. And that was one of my questions. What happens if the infrastructure isn't ours? And we need to make the repairs? So...
Township and fire company cost response to clean up. It doesn't say damage to infrastructure.
Does it in the ordinance that we're reading? There's a whole, the actual...
All right, well, on the note that you gave us, it clearly says reimbursement of township and fire department cost of response and cleanup.
Yes, I understand.
Doesn't say anywhere in here.
I understand. We, so there's a whole...
There's pages of an ordinance.
There's pages of an ordinance.
Then that probably should have been in the short title of it.
So that's the long title. It's, that's the long title.
That's why I'm standing up here questioning this. I'm questioning your piece of paper.
Yeah, yeah, read, yeah, give the ordinance a review.
Yeah, understood. Thank you. I understand. So I think that, John, you're hearing that, you know, to take it back and maybe make some edits, tweaks, narrow it, bring it back. Is there any, any other specifics that any commissioners want to give guidance to John on? Okay.
Good luck.
All right. All right, thank you, John. We're going to move on to Resolution 2018-... Oh, Roberta, I sincerely apologize. I'm sorry. I did not look up. I'm sorry.
I think there's still public comment on that item that we've been discussing.
Certainly, no, please. I'm sorry.
Having gone on a bus that was approaching a low bridge, at this low bridge in central Pennsylvania, they have a pole on one side of the bridge. They have another pole that goes like this, above, that's basically at the same height as the bridge. They have a tennis ball that hangs down from that pole. If you hit that pole, which is probably, the tennis ball, which is probably, you know, 20 feet in front of the bridge, you know you're going to hit the bridge. So it's like an early warning sign. It doesn't cost a lot of money, but it may prevent some accidents. Thank you.
Thank you, Roberta, and I apologize. I was looking at my agenda.
Bob, we've had that suggestion about 1,000 times, so...
Correct.
Why not, why not do that?
The township, because there is a liability if the township decides to do PennDOT's work, which again, comes back to PennDOT not taking their responsibility seriously and putting on the township. They would have to approve anything. We would have to pay for PennDOT's.
So, so the basically answer is, this is a PennDOT road, it's a state highway. Any early vehicle detection system must be PennDOT-approved and installed. And that's been our, our position on that. Tennis ball has not conformed with that. Or, or chains, or various other techniques.
Okay. Am I safe to move on to Item G? Okay. I'm going to move on to Item G, Resolution 2018-131, authorizing Meliora Design to provide design permitting and construction drawings for the West Wayne Preserve Stormwater Management Project. I believe these gentlemen have been waiting for. And flood reduction options for the Darby Creek watershed at a cost of $185,889. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Nocini?
Thank you, Madam President. So I, I think folks are very aware of flooding in other parts of our township, but they're not as aware of flooding in this area. And I'll say this area being South Devon Avenue, Oakford, and the like. So we do get flooding there. I just don't think it's as widely known. So this, this proposal from Meliora Design is actually twofold. The first portion of it is, is to provide a design permitting and construction drawings for the West Wayne Preserve Stormwater Management Area. So decades ago, the township acquired the West Wayne, what was now called the West Wayne Preserve. Actually, last Friday evening, the manager gave me plans that went back to 1999 for a project we were going to do there, which never, never came to fruition. So Phase 1 of the proposal from Meliora is to provide a design for the West Wayne Preserve. Now, I, I put something that came to the board several years ago. We partnered with a grant, on a grant with the Delaware Riverkeeper. So I included that in the package just to show you something conceptually. We really don't know what it looks like until you, unless it so pleases the board to award this design. Then that design could take place. It will also include public input and obviously Board of Commissioners' input as to what, what that would be. So Phase 1 of this, or the first leg of this, is to end up with documents that we can go to bid with and have a project done for stormwater management to help the folks that live South Devon, Oakford, and that area. Item 2 is then the flood reduction options. So to, I know it's getting late and I'll try to be brief. So Item 2 is basically where they provide the commissioners and residents with a location of possible flood mitigation projects, quantification of the flood reduction, cost for design, budget cost for construction. So then you get, the board would get a menu and we could do a cost-benefit analysis. It costs X dollars. Here's the reduction in floodwater, or here's the reduction in runoff. So, again, in all these, there's public input. Commissioner Abel, the township manager, myself have met with a lot of folks that live in the Darby Creek watershed. They've been asking for some help for a long time. Also, walking Friends of the Radnor Trail with the commissioner and the manager, a couple spots were earmarked as possible areas to do things. So on the one enclosure, you'll see just below the West Wayne Preserve, there's a rather large area. Some call it the dog park. It's where the dogs run around at Friends of the Radnor Trail. And a little bit beyond that, there's a, a large area. It's a large hollowed-out area that's made from the confluence of the slope of the Radnor Trail, as well as some other slopes. So what we're asking the Board of Commissioners to do tonight is approve this contract for Meliora Design in the amount of $185,889 to perform these two tasks. Again, the first task being, in some fashion, the goal is to go to bid for stormwater management at the West Wayne Preserve. And the second, for lack of a better term, is to provide a list of options with criteria to the commissioners for the rest of the watershed.
Thank you, Mr. Nocini. Commissioner Abel, do you want to address this?
Yep. Thank you, Madam President. I am going to support this resolution. And I'm supporting it for two reasons. One, in my seven years living off South Devon, we, I've seen more water coming down South Devon, coming down West Wayne. And it's more than just the type of storm we saw in August. The lesser storms that we've seen in the last couple months, I've still seen water runoff the West Wayne, West Wayne Preserve. And it's on South Devon, you know, up to 24 or 48 hours after those storms. So I think there's a need in this area for stormwater management. The second issue that people may not be aware of is that we used to have, there was flooding under the West Wayne Bridge. And the township would have to go mark it off. And during big storms, people would be prevented from going there. The township came in the last several weeks and opened up one of the pipes to mitigate that water staying under the bridge. And all that water is now coming into the Friends of Radnor Trail Park. So we've now helped one area, but we've created another problem because, you know, X number of gallons are now coming through and they'll end up going into the tributary that then ends up in the neighbors' backyards on Arbordale, Oakford. And, you know, eventually they get to the fourth ward through Little Darby Creek. So I think what has been presented here is a good option. And in addition to the West Wayne Preserve and looking at the Friends of Radnor Trail, there's also, and Steve, this is part of it, we're also asking that they look at the target parking lot as an option, correct?
So specifically, it was Friends of Radnor Trail. And then they're also directed to look for public-private partnerships, whether it be that parking lot or other places around. So we haven't reached out to those folks yet, but that would definitely be something, once contact is made, we would love to, to pursue. As well as any other area that we could possibly use for some stormwater management.
Okay. Because, you know, not only are we getting water coming down South Devon and West Wayne, but we're also getting water that comes across. And it starts over in Tridifern, comes across Sugar Town, ends up in the creek. And then the neighbors on, then, then the neighbors on Arbordale are not only getting hit from one side on West Wayne, they're getting hit from the other side coming across South Devon from, from the Tridifern side. So I think, I think there's several benefits to this project. One is that most of the project would be done on township property, township-owned property. So we're, you know, we're not talking about digging up streets, digging up neighborhoods. You know, it's, it's a pretty compact area. And we own the area, so hopefully that cost then doesn't grow. You know, the potential to partner with Tridifern, I think, is, is a benefit. And then the idea here is to capture the water where it lands. So we're also improving water quality, which is, I think, is a big benefit to this project. You know, for me to be supportive of anything that goes forward, I do have a couple conditions. You know, many of this, many parts of this area work as, as stormwater management currently. So I would like for any proposed project to keep it natural. I would like to use the environment to help control the, the stormwater. Meaning, I think in, you know, so like Friends of Radnor Trail, I think we could have a levee system that comes off of the creek so that water then spills over into the Friends of Radnor Trail and doesn't end up in, on Arbordale and Oakford. And I think that's a, a good way to use the environment and our public property. I'd also like to see preservation of trees. You know, so I understand if we do a project in these areas, some trees are, may have to come down. I would like, but I, I want that all part of the discussion. And so the neighbors are aware, when you get a project in the West Wayne Preserve, you know, these trees will, will have to be removed. What will go there and why do we have to remove those? I think that's important for any project to go forward. And third, you know, Steve, are we able to, if this proposal's approved, can we ask that Meliora at least reach out to the Delaware Riverkeepers on their proposed project for this area so they can get a concept of... this area so they can get a concept of what was being looked at?
Meliora actually did the design for the Delaware Riverkeeper. So they're, now, we're not just getting a, for lack of a better term, regurgitated version of that, but they are very, so they have knowledge of the site, and they actually did that design with the Riverkeeper.
Okay. Because another benefit, I think, in this type of project is you're going to get a lot of public support, and they'll be out in the West Wayne Preserve helping see this project through, and I think that's an important key to any stormwater project.
I'm going to go ahead and comment. I'll, I will be supporting this this evening. So one of the things, so Steve, this $185,889 is going to come from the stormwater fund, correct?
Yes, Madam President.
Okay. So certainly, the stormwater fee benefiting all areas of the township. I think the other thing to note is that just because we approve this project doesn't mean other projects won't move forward, and I think the thing to also note is that these projects, while we have the money for the engineering and the design, we will still need to figure out how we pay for them overall. So those are discussions, I don't know, maybe third, fourth meeting of the 12, 10 meetings we'll be having. We can discuss all of these things, but I certainly support this. I think it is important. I thank you, Steve, for noting that many areas of this township flood. So I think this is a good use of the stormwater fee, exactly what it was meant to do, and I'll be supporting this.
You know, there's nothing precluding us from adding extra meetings to the extra meetings, too.
Like extra meetings, I am glad to do that.
That number could be 20.
And can, let me just make one more comment. Steve, can you, can you explain how this project, or not how, but this project is not coordinated with the Tap Trail?
Thank you, Commissioner. So there was, on one of the attachments where I showed the West Wayne Preserve and the Friends of the Radnor Trail, there is a green line that says, "Proposed Radnor Tap Trail." So they are independent of each other, right? So this, the Tap Trail was approved by a previous board that goes through there. This project is standalone. Whether there's a Tap Trail or not, the intent is to do stormwater management with the Friends, with the West Wayne Preserve.
Now, because this board previously approved work in the West Wayne Preserve for the Tap Trail, can anything we do, so I'm not, I don't know that, well, I don't support, I didn't support the Tap Trail project. If we do a project in here through this resolution, would that meet the conditions of the Tap Trail?
I think we have to look at that. I believe I copied you on an email I posed to one of our consultants, the consultant who's doing the Tap Trail, and I think what it really comes down to is timing. So we would need to have some design of some sort, even like a very preliminary design of the West Wayne Preserve, that the other consultant could say, "Stormwater management for this leg of the Tap Trail will occur here," and that way, because the whole thing is, we can't get our NPDES permit if we don't comply with our own ordinance. So we need to comply with our own ordinance for that several hundred feet that goes from Conestoga Road to the existing trail. But that's something we're definitely going to evaluate and address as best we can, and I say, like I say a lot, depends on how quickly West Wayne moves. The Tap Trail's much further along in the design standpoint.
So if this project moves slowly, will the Tap Trail go forward with that basin?
Well, we've asked the consultant to look at different options other than that low area that was there. From what our consultant, who is a registered landscape architect, said, "There are a lot of declining trees. There are a lot of Norway maples, which our arborists had said should be removed when you can." So I think the impact to the West Wayne Preserve, although there are trees now, I don't believe they're in the greatest of shape, but I asked him to look at a more linear approach, if possible, so that maybe we can either use part of the trail itself or alongside it. And as you said, we're going to look and see what we can do on the other side. And that was a great suggestion on your part.
All right. Thanks, Steve.
Steve, is it possible, or to, I guess, how much, when we dig up, I guess, are we going to be digging up roads? Because I'm not all that familiar with that area. Is there any way to work with the sewer and fixing that as we?
Commissioner, I don't, until the project's awarded, I don't know that, I mean, obviously, that's right-of-way that the township can use. The main part was the West Wayne Preserve and the Friends of the Radnor Trail. Previous studies have highlighted Bo Connor Park and Phillipone Park, and I don't think any of those boards had any flavor to do things in those parks. So we would look wherever we can. I don't know. It could involve roads, and if it did, we would definitely address utilities, should that be the case, whether they be our utilities or in a sanitary sewer or a Pico or waterline.
I plan to support this. I've supported work at the West Wayne Preserve since the '90s. We've had several really good options that didn't get completed for a number of reasons. Most recently was the project, and I think it was actually approved when Tom Masterson was still on this board, and that ended up because the Riverkeeper had committed to providing the funds, and they did apply for several grants, but were unsuccessful. So there, we've had variations on these designs, but it's an area that's needed attention for the past 30 years.
Any other comment? Any staff comment? I know there is public comment, please. You've been waiting very patiently. Thank you very much.
I had one, though, before, sorry, I was, just take a second. On this $185,000, is there any way you can phase that and maybe have some alternatives before we develop the whole, so do some feasibility, pick out the right alternatives, and then spend the money on the alternative you want? Or do you need to have all $185,000 upfront? That's a pretty big commitment.
And I, you know, if you look at Meliora's proposal, so I'm required to synopsize this into one eight-and-a-half-by-11 sheet, so I go to the bare bones. There is considerably more of that in this evaluation. My recommendation would be to move forward with the whole project. So the first salvo against, for flood reduction is, West Wayne Preserve, that's what it's always been there for from the township standpoint, was to be used, right? Goes back to the '90s and before. So the first thing is, use that, go to bid, actually get a project in the ground to help the situation. Concurrent with that, come up with, you know, through, you know, modeling, public meetings, come up with that menu that can then be used for future budgets, future capital planning. My recommendation, Commissioner, is that we award the whole contract so the whole thing moves forward. So we're not just, the West Wayne Preserve is not a panacea. There needs to be other projects, and that's what the second half is. My recommendation would be respectfully to award the whole project to Meliora, to move forward all at once.
Okay. Public comment. Thank you. Thank you again for waiting.
Oh, sure. Thank you very much. Matt Holtman. I live on 260 South Devon Avenue, right across from the West Wayne Preserve. I want to put in a word of support for this project. I strongly urge you to pursue it. This needs to be done. It's needed to be done for a long time, and I think you're going to get a lot of benefit out of it in terms of stormwater management, environmental improvements, and health benefits as well. Some of the highlights have been touched upon already. We already own the land. There's been a plan on the books for a long time. We know that this is something that needs to be dealt with. Lot of invasive species in the tract there, and I think we can get a lot of benefits by cleaning that up. There's also a lot of stagnant water in there. In the summertime, it's a breeding ground for mosquitoes. Very heavy usage along the trail there and along the, you know, sort of the Friends of Radnor Trail Park. So I really think it's a three-for-one, and I think this is something that's going to benefit everybody, both upstream and downstream. So thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Thanks for being here, and again, thank you for your patience.
Your turn. My turn. This is what my wife said.
Welcome back.
Preston Terrell, 21 Oakford Road, and Jeff is my neighbor on Arbordale, right behind me. You use the term flood. The township floods a lot. The problem we have is not from floods. Hurricane Floyd 99 was a flood. Last, this summer was a flood. We have a continual muckiness in our backyard, and so it's not a flood problem. It's an everyday problem. The kids can't go out on the swing set without coming back muddy. They can't go outside in the backyard right now because they're going to slip and fall on the ice. It is a problem, and hopefully this is a step towards solving the daily problems. The flood problems, you're not going to stop. If we get a million gallons of rain in an hour, you're not going to be able to solve it, but this is something that can be solved and can help that area tremendously. The, what was I going to say? I don't know. Oh, the lady that's going to be doing this, from the gentleman that grew up in Jeff's house as a child. He said that there used to be a creek between our house. There's no creek there now. So is there any way that this lady can come and see and find out? I know we talked to you about this fictitious alleged creek.
Right. So a lot of the issues with you and your neighbors is volunteer grading, beds in the way, above-ground pools, decks. I don't know if permits were gotten, so from point A to point B.
Or the permits were just approved.
Or, well, we know none of those were because they all predate me. So, but there's all these impediments in between your properties that causes problem after problem after problem. So we talked about how difficult that would be to address. What we do need to look at is, up on the street, is there a way to reduce the water that can go down through there? Or is there some other method? We don't know. But like I say, the way everything is graded on those lawns, there's problem after problem that, not saying it was you.
You have my permission to come in with a bulldozer and.
So.
Regrade. Jeff, you up for that?
That is one of the, that is one of the problems, whether it's addressing everybody's property or trying to reduce the flow that gets there. We will be looking at that. That was when, when you spoke to the manager, to myself, Commissioner Abel, this has all been, you know, this is all part of the big topic as to why Commissioner Abel wanted to move forward.
That's it.
Thank you. Thank you again for being here.
Sorry, I'll be, I'll be brief.
That's all right. Good evening. Thank you.
My name's Jeff Adams. I live on Arbordale Road. As President mentioned, I am his neighbor. I think why this is really important is, I think this will really address a lot of issues, again, not only upstream but also downstream. I think why this is really important, that something is addressed in this manner, is that what's been brought up before by many people is that if I decide to try and find a solution on my own within the zoning laws, you know, all I'm going to do is impact my neighbors and impact downstream. So if everyone decides to do that, it's not, I'm not an engineer, so there's a good chance that I'm going to impact people downstream, whereas I think something like this will kind of help alleviate the issues that you see going downstream, and neighbors just kind of taking it upon themselves to rightfully fix their own issues, but not knowing what it's going to do to their neighbors and to other people. So I support really any kind of project that's going to not only just alleviate the issues that we are seeing, but also help a significant amount of people, which I think this will. Thank you.
Thank you again for being here. Any additional public comment? Roberta, I won't overlook you. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Roberta Winters, 326 Williams Road in Rosemont. I would just hope that you would have strong accountability language in those contracts because based on what happened at Clemmer Crohn Park, our rain gardens are now ponds, and we want to make sure that the infiltration and the fact that these current facilities are in fact serving as natural retention basins, that that ability is not in fact deterred in any way. Thank you.
Thank you, Roberta. Any additional public comment? And I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2018-131, authorizing Meliora Design to provide design permitting and construction drawings for the West Wayne Preserve Stormwater Management Project and flood reduction options for the Darby Creek watershed at a cost of $185,889, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0. All right. Resolution 2018-134, Penn Medicine, 145 King of Pressure Road, final financial subdivision plan. Mr. Falcone? And thank you for your patience as well.
I have my engineer with me this evening. He actually just stepped out. He missed, he thought he had a couple more minutes. So we're here, again, we were here a couple of weeks ago to talk during the caucus about the financial subdivision plan. I really have nothing new to add. No lease has been signed yet, Mr. Booker, so it has not been included. The sale has not taken place yet. They're waiting for this to go through to sell the property, so there's nothing for that. We did submit a copy of our proposed declaration of easements to the township. That was drafted by Brandywine's Council, but it was submitted to the township. I believe there's two open questions y'all had for us last week, two weeks ago.
First, I need to call for a motion to approve 2018-134. I'm sorry, I forgot to do that.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All right. Now discussion. Sorry, Dave.
So we are here, I guess, to answer any additional questions, but we had a pretty thorough discussion last, last time on it. Nothing's changed, obviously. So we're here, and like I said, I did bring the engineer tonight to field some of your questions as well, in case I was unable to do so.
Thank you. Okay. Any Commissioner comment?
I did see, are you going, are you going to put your drawing on the table, or you're not? I did see the, what is it, the plan of the cross-easements, or what is the plan called? I can't locate it right now on my.
It's a declaration of easements, covenants and restrictions.
So I'm just, this is the first, I'm seeing the declaration of easements, covenants and restrictions. This was not provided before caucus, so I'd ask that we table and take a look at this and bring it back next week, because I haven't had a chance to go through this drawing, and we don't, we don't have it for the people to look at either.
It's not a drawing. Just so you're clear, it's not a drawing. It's the same plan y'all saw the last time around. There is no new plan. It's one plan, one sheet. Same one you reviewed, and the county reviewed it, actually, I should report that as well. The county reviewed it, and we received the letter from the county recommending approval to this financial subdivision.
Is there a second for the table? The drawing I'm looking at is, was not provided before, until it was provided in our packet this week. So it is.
Mr. Rice, I don't believe, there was no new financial subdivision plan, right? We're still dealing with the same financial subdivision plan. There's no new drawing. Mr. Booker is referencing a new drawing.
Whatever was in front of the planning commission, I don't think that's changed.
No, it hasn't changed. It was reviewed by both planning commissions, as well as this board and caucus, and staff.
This plan was not provided as part of the package last meeting? The plan is called, I thought this was the, the question was, where is a, where is the information regarding the declaration of easements, covenants, et cetera? So we didn't have it that last, last meeting, and now you're saying that this is it?
That's not what I said.
So what did you say, Dave?
Yeah, so this is the plan. So it's two different things.
So where's the covenants then, and cross-easements?
Yeah, so they. Yeah, so they were submitted to the solicitor. It's, it's for the township's review. Remember, so this is a financial subdivision. Those go along with the plan, but they're discussed much like a declaration for a condominium or UPCA. Rich is not brought to the board. It's submitted to the solicitor just for legal review. It's not a document for this board to approve. It's to be submitted for legal compliance. Again, very similar, I brought up to the board last time. This is very similar to a UPCA or a condo where the board gives the solicitor the ability to review a document just to make sure that it's legally sufficient. But what this board considers, what you all review, is the actual plan itself. And that's what you've had, that's what you looked at, that's what the county planning commission looked at, that's what your planning commission looked at. So there are two different things. There's a plan. That's what you have here. That's what you've had. And then there's a declaration of easements. That's submitted to staff.
And this board has not seen the declaration of easements?
Again.
And, and again, that's what I had asked for last meeting.
So when we had a draft.
With all, with all due respect to Council Solicitor Rice, I would also like the board to have an opportunity to read, to review that as well. And as I saw in your letter, I can't, I can't find the letter. It basically said, we'll review it and, and let you know if there's any issues. What does your letter say that's in the packet?
My letter?
Yes, your letter.
Well, the resolution says that.
Well, your letter, there was, there was a review letter that went with it. As I recall.
I don't think so. I didn't send any review letter. But let me, let me just address the, the issue. You know, when you approve any other subdivision or land development, you always attach as a condition that there'll be development agreements, financial security agreements, easements, deeds dedications, all of those will be done and approved by the township solicitor. That's been your policy. It's never been any different than that. The cross easements, the declaration for this project was submitted to, to me last week. And that'll be finalized before there's any construction out there.
Why not finalize it and review it with the board prior to approval?
I mean, it's up to the board. I mean, you know, bearing in mind, Commissioner Booker, you have two lawsuits against this applicant. Would you want to be involved in reviewing that?
I, I'm, I'm appealing to decisions of the board. There's, there's no, the applicant is, is part of that. My appeals of the zoning amendment as well as the approval of the land development. This is, this is something different.
These are the plans and the ordinances that this applicant's proposing.
What I'm, what I'm asking is why not, why can't we see this before we approve it? And you're, you have a letter here saying, "The purpose of the financial subdivision was allow the ultimate user to own and fee simple as part of the commissions, planning commissions review, et cetera. Roger will likely opine on whether the financial subdivision plan is consistent."
It also says, so in, but in that letter.
Let me finish. The declaration, this is John, this is Mary Eberly.
From 2000.
"The declaration of covenants must also include a requirement that the lots be kept clean, good repair, and et cetera." So.
But it says finally, "If final plan approval has not been granted for both lots prior to the recording of the declaration, the declaration should also include a requirement that no permits will be issued until file plan approval has been secured."
Right.
So.
So it's up to the board.
So it's up to the board.
I'm requesting that we see that before we, we move forward with this.
If I could respond?
Yes, please, Mr. Falcone.
So I think what you heard from your solicitor and what I'm going to emphasize is, in my opinion, this is yet another attempt from Commissioner Booker to sidetrack this project specifically, deviating from longstanding township policy. This applicant is here, it's following the process to a T. We're following your ordinance to a T. The point made by Mr. Rice that Mr. Booker has two pending lawsuits which have named this applicant and pertain to this project. That said, we welcome his continued feedback throughout this process. But the reality is, there is a clear and unequivocal bias from Mr. Booker to this project. We are asking for tonight a final approval to this plan. This is a completely compliant plan. We are seeking no relief from your ordinance for it. It is as fundamental as it gets. To suggest that we go through another deviation to satisfy Mr. Booker's fascination with delaying this project, I think is improper and would, I think thwart what has been a long, overly drawn-out process. So we would just ask the board consider that.
Thank you. Mr. Booker, may I ask a question? So I'm going to ask the board, is there anyone here on the board that feels they need to see this document, the declaration, that Commissioner Booker is asking for before they make a, before they make a final decision? Anyone else feel they need this? Okay, so.
So why not see it though?
So.
Even, even if none of you feel like you want, you want to see it, and I, I would question why you would want to approve a plan without seeing all the documents.
And Commissioner Booker, I understand that you, this is something that you need and if you are the only one that needs that, you may certainly allow that to reflect in your final vote. But right now, I do not hear a consensus of the board for that document. And if that is what is holding up the vote for you, then I suggest you vote accordingly when it comes time for the vote.
Well, that was, that's my first item.
Okay.
So let's, let's move on. So again, we should see all of the documents before we approve. This is the first time this board has ever approved a financial subdivision. It's never been approved in the township ever before. It's the first time it's ever been before us. And we can't know for sure that it complies until we see all the documentation. Similarly, we all, I also last meeting asked for a copy. And I understand that perhaps there is a, an agreement that has not been finalized, but this land is going to be transferred subject to a sale leaseback. It's a financial, typically sale leasebacks are financial structures, financial structuring or a financing vehicle. And in this particular case, with this first issue, first time this issue has ever been looked at by this township, I think that I personally would be remiss to not look at all the documentation and understand the underlying transactions before approving it. And I would think that this board, at least our solicitor, would want to see all of that before we would just approve it. And, and then, and then finally, and I, and I feel like I'm the only one that's actually looking out for my constituents. I'm the only one that has this facility in my neighborhood. But finally, this, how can this subdivision, financial subdivision, come before us as only a final? There should have been a preliminary. We should have had all the, the, the cross easements as well as the financial subdivision plan, a copy of the sale leaseback forms, form documents. Then we could move forward with a final review and approval. So a preliminary and a final. There's no reason that this subdivision should be afforded a final approval in, in two weeks. So those are my issues.
Okay. Is there any other commissioner comment?
One, one other. And I, I feel that Penn is not being completely forthright and open with this board and providing all of the documentation before demanding to have an approval.
Again, is there any other commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment to the motion on the floor? All right, then I'm going to call the, the vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2018-134, Penn Medicine, 145 King of Pressure Road, final financial subdivision plan, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six to one. Gentlemen, thank you very much. All right, moving on. Resolution 2018-135, awarding Gannett Fleming Incorporated the sanitary sewer system condition assessment in the amount of $92,000. Mr. Norsini.
Thank you, Madam President. The, at a previous meeting, the Board of Commissioners had asked for some type of assessment vehicle to take a look at our sanitary sewer system. So the before, the proposal before, the proposal before the commissioners is, in essence, a tabletop evaluation of the piping that comprises the system along with our pump stations and other mechanical items. The criteria for pipe replacement will be the age of the pipe. So again, I did a brief synopsis of Gannett Fleming's proposal. Using our resources and interviews with staff, they're going to develop the inventory of this system, perform the condition assessment based on the criteria noted, which is strictly age, provide budget level probable replacement costs, give us a GIS layer to put on our newly purchased Esri GIS, and present the finding to the commissioners. So this will be the first step in assessing the sanitary sewer system. I know when we spoke, the commissioners had noted, "You understand the cost of televising is considerable, but truly the only way to ascertain the condition of the pipe is to televise it." But this will be a good first step and that can be further refined. So I noted later in the paragraph, "I would respectfully recommend the township budget funds to televise roughly 10% of the system every year." So you're doing the loop every 10 years to go through it. The reason being, number one, that's good practice, that's a standard, that's a best management practice for sanitary sewers. But also, when the price comes in for replacing pipes solely on age, now we've already, I think, discounted North Wayne and South Wayne and the 100-year-old vitrified clay pipe. We're not going to spend a lot of time on that. But there's other portions of the township where televising may, we find that we don't need to replace a pipe. We can use one of many other maintenance items, whether we do pipe bursting, pipelining, spot repairs. So that would further refine it. But the, the main crux of, of what's before you tonight is to have Gannett Fleming evaluate our sewer system based, basically based on age, also included his visits to all our pump stations to get an idea for them. I can tell you most definitely, our pump stations, especially the smaller ones, the ejection pump stations, not only are they old, they were on the economy end when they were brand new. So they're not exactly your Cadillac of stations. Not that we're looking for Cadillacs, we just want something good, right? We want something that's going to last. So that, that's it in the crux, the crux of the issue. The cost of the proposal is $92,000. I do have Roger Phillips here from Gannett Fleming who provided this proposal. If you have any questions for him or myself.
So one of my repeated frustrations has been that it feels like we do a lot of studies before we get to actually putting shovels in the ground. And it sounds from what you're saying like this will at least give us an idea of what the cost will be. But is there a way that we could actually just move forward with, tell us where we need to start digging to replace the sewer?
We, we have that in, in the, in the proposed capital budget for you. That's in front of you now or will be in front of you in upcoming months. We have a whole laundry list of projects. This was, this proposal was solely in response to the Board of Commissioners asking for something to provide magnitude to the cost of the maintenance of the system solely. Now, with what we have in the budget request and the televising, so we have certain areas that we know need to be replaced. There's really no, I don't see any sense in spending a lot of time in televising and air testing and smoke testing and, and doing things like that. We need to go do that. North Wayne is one. And hopefully that could be done in, along with the sanitary stormwater project. Midland Avenue, we already have preliminary plans for sanitary sewer. We know that that's ready to go. And that could also be done in conjunction with stormwater. So we have plans that, I'm sorry, we have projects that are before you to be approved for construction, design and construction. You'll have this to give you magnitude. And if we do start doing some televising, we can give you other projects. But Commissioner, we have a laundry list of, of pipe that's ready to be replaced.
It sounds like basically you're saying that this is not going to be a process where next year we get one monster survey that says, here's every pipe that you have to replace, and then next year we just go and do that. The concept would be there are some areas that we know everything needs to be replaced, like Wayne, which unfortunately is where I live. And as a result, we're just going to have to go in there and get started. And there's some other areas where we've got projects. And there are other places where we won't know until later date what it's going to look like because we're going to be televising them over the course of the next 10 years.
Well said, Commissioner.
Just quickly, before anyone else speaks, I need to get a motion to approve Resolution 2018-135.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. I think we, we're now adequate. Okay.
Steve, can we take advantage of RHM? I know they do televising for some of the other members.
Actually, we are their biggest customer. So it's based on your flows. We, we get a lot of work done by RHM. We get televising, manhole rehabilitation, grounding. They are, they do a great job. And they come in for us for emergencies too. So I think we could augment that with additional televising. But to be honest, you know, right off the bat, we have so much that we can replace. I, I, my suggestion is in a lot of these areas, we would go to design and bid. That would be my recommendation.
Any other commissioner comment on this? Any additional staff comment? Any public comment? All right. All those in favor of Resolution 2018-135, awarding Gannett Fleming Incorporated the sanitary sewer system condition assessment in the amount of $92,000. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven nothing. All right, moving on.
Question, what, where's that money being paid for out of?
This is the O2 sewer fund, sir.
So that'll come basically from the note proceeds? Right? Because there was a shortfall in that without the note.
Well, and the increase in the fee.
Okay. Community development, comprehensive lighting ordinance for discussion. Commissioner Farhi or Solicitor Rice, who's introducing this?
One more question before we leave that sewer. So will that sewer project, that's, that will not be the subject of one of our 10 meetings presumably. That one, that one's good.
No. There are a lot of projects you're going to have to determine priority as well as how you're going to fund those in the future. And then how you're going to want to operate moving forward as the owner of the system.
Well, how about that $92,000 though? That $92,000 we just approved, is that part of the 10-meeting review or is that?
That's separate.
That's separate. That's, that is approved. That won't be part of it though.
That's correct.
Okay. Item L.
Can I put some other ones in that?
Item L, comprehensive lighting ordinance for discussion.
Okay. I'll, I guess I'll start on this since I drafted this. And let me just first start by saying, I am not a lighting expert. This is an ordinance which would cover all manners of lights in the township. This drew out of discussion about, to some extent, Villanova, to some extent, other lighting issues in the township that have come up. You don't really have anything on the books that is comprehensive or that covers a lot of the complaints that we've heard over the years. So this is, as I said, covers sports field lighting, it covers commercial lighting, it covers residential lighting, and it establishes a standard for light spill off of, in particular, commercial or sports field properties. It references the IES Lighting Handbook, which is considered sort of the standard when it comes to local regulation. And it's, it's fairly comprehensive. It'll cover any kind of a lighting situation. To some extent, what you have in place now will be grandfathered in unless it's a safety or a nuisance hazard. But anybody going forward would have to comply with the regulations in here, the way this is drafted. It's my recommendation, depending on what the board wants to do, is that you have this, go to the planning commission because this is something that, you know, is a, is a planning commission type of a ordinance and have, and get some input from them. And maybe even send it to Delaware County Planning Commission. Because I know, I inquired to see whether they had any kind of comprehensive lighting ordinance or regulations. They don't, the county. So I think it would be good to get input from both of those bodies before you take any definitive action on this.
Okay. Commissioner Farhi, do you have anything?
No, that, that sounds good. I think planning should.
John, there's an international dark sky society, and I understand they have model ordinances. Also, there's a community in Western Pennsylvania. I don't remember exactly where it is, but it's a dark sky location. They may have some ordinances we could model off of.
Yeah, and what I would do is, I mean, that, that could supplement this, but that's something that I think the, the planning commission, again, you know, will find some additional samples of lighting ordinances and, and see what the recommendation is. samples of lighting ordinances and, and see what the recommendation is. But right now, you really don't have anything that covers some of the issues that have come up over the last few years with nuisance lighting and, and redevelopment. Properties that get redeveloped are going, would have to comply with this type of an ordinance if it was on the books.
John, there's a Planning Commission meeting tomorrow, is that correct? And if we send it, would this go to the, this, that meeting tomorrow?
Mr. Norcini.
Is there something on?
Is the Planning Commission?
This is, this is on the Planning Commission agenda for tomorrow night.
So, they'll have some discussion about?
Yes, sir.
Is that enough time for, I mean, we haven't even voted, I think that's the correct next step, but we have not voted, even though, to put it on there, so it's kind of like putting the cart before the horse.
I think if you just motion to refer it to the Planning Commission tomorrow, you know, at their next meeting, they'll, they'll pick it up tomorrow night. That's really all you need to do at this point.
Would someone like to make a motion to refer this, the comprehensive lighting ordinance, to the Planning Commission?
Sure. So moved.
Is there any additional discussion, commissioner discussion with regards to this? And now, to the motion on the floor. Did you have something? Nope. Is, so I just have one question. So, this is coming up, this is going to impact a lot of, I think, organizations, you know, certainly the school district and things like that. Will people be notified that this is kind of out there? Or, I mean, it's all of a sudden, it's going to be on the Planning Commission agenda, but people, you know, aren't reading the agendas. Is there some way we can note that we're looking at this on the, on the website, or at least contact the schools that we know that have lighting? You know, there's, I guess this would impact the high school, yeah, the university, the different universities, Agnes, or one of Memorial Field, right? So.
And would be businesses, too, as well.
Yeah. I mean, I think we should at least let people know, so people can be aware and, you know, come out and participate if, because this is kind of quick, so.
I'm, once the next.
Tell them why it is you want to do this.
I think, I think it's not, this is not a Villanova, everyone thinks this is a Villanova-centric issue. It's not, it's just, okay, well, that's not the case.
And that's, that's why I said I thought we should let people know that we're considering this.
I know, I think, that's why I think that putting it on at the next meeting is a little bit premature. I mean, if you could wait to at least get some more input and get, you know, get other people's opinion, and that we may have an issue when it comes to implementation. You can't just say, oh, we're changing it tomorrow, you have to comply tomorrow. So, to hear other people and other opinions, I think, would, would definitely add value to the process.
I would suspect that the Planning Commission will take this up in more than one night.
Okay.
This will be maybe briefly tomorrow night, but at least one or two more meetings, Steve, I would think.
I concur with the solicitor. I think tomorrow night will be an introduction at best.
Yeah.
You all right with that, Lisa? I mean, does that give you, do you feel that the residents have enough time?
I think as long as they get the word out. I mean, yeah, I think people just should know that, that this is out there, I mean, and it's under consideration, and if people can be made aware, who might be, who will be impacted.
That's fine.
All right. Any other staff comment on this? Any other commissioner comment, I'm sorry. Is there any public comment?
I am tentatively planning to have a public forum on this during February with a variety of different speakers, so I don't know if that meets your timeline or not, but January is kind of a busy month, so we're going to look at February. So, I'll let you know how that evolves.
Well, if planning introduces it tomorrow night, and then they take it, they only meet once a month, so, January, February, so we may not see it again until March, maybe? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roberta. Any other public comment? Good evening, and thank you. I know you've been waiting all, all night to speak. Thank you.
My name is Martin Caulfield, and I'm from Hawthorne Lane. I just want to offer some assistance. I'm not an expert, but I did go out on the Internet to find out, are there organizations out there that can help? And there is one, it's called the Pennsylvania Outdoor Lighting Council. And they actually have modeled outdoor lighting ordinances for towns that don't have subject matter experts, to give them a little heads up. So, I don't need them, okay? I'm bringing them off if somebody wants them, okay? You're welcome. Let me get back to the mic. There's also a very nice questionnaire that they had on their website. It was questionnaire for initiating a municipal outdoor lighting ordinance. I made enough copies for more than just one, because I think it would be good for each of you to take a look at it. And to me, the most glaring item in this questionnaire is addressing what needs to be grandfathered. Apparently, nothing has to be grandfathered. It is up to the town to decide how they want to implement it. Sometimes towns issue this, issue their ordinance with only a five-year grace period. Some get a little bit more aggressive and say a two-year grace period, and some actually go to a one-year, and some go to none, okay? Because they believe that there's something in their township that needs to be addressed immediately. I'm not advocating five years, and I'm not advocating immediate, okay? These, there's too many places that are lit up that maybe will not comply, that still need to function, and I would advocate doing something in the one-to-three-year range when you go to do it. So, I have copies, like I said. I don't know if I can give it to one, or I can come and hand it individually. How would you like it? And what I would say is, don't shy away from it. Visit that website, and you'll see towns in Pennsylvania that have followed these leads that are given by this council, and you'll find ones that have given zero grandfathering out to a few years. Thank you.
Thank you.
One last quick comment. I, too, agree with this, with what he just said, that this shouldn't be grandfathered forever. If, give them a little time to make adjustments, but as things get developed more and more, and more buildings go up, I mean, the light pollution is, I mean, we don't want to be like the 202 corridor, I mean, we don't want to, we're not downtown. We shouldn't be downtown. We're green country, you know? So, that should be definitely a consideration. I mean, it's getting, I mean, in my neighborhood alone, I'm several blocks away from, from the stadium, and at night, you don't have to walk with a flashlight, because it's as bright as day, and they're on until 10:00. So, I think that, I, I know that there's, they have ways of making it less, they choose not to, but that's the way it goes. But we should, we should take care of light pollution, we should not be a part of it, we should not be adding to it.
Thank you. Thank you, Anna Marie, for being so patient.
Anna Marie Hessman, Old Oaks neighborhood. I, I basically, I skimmed through the ordinance. I understand it's very much a draft form today, is that, okay. So, the two previous speakers both spoke about grandfathering, and my question really was, there was no place in there that even discussed grandfathering. At what point would that come under discussion? So, it's more of a question than a comment, because I was concerned that there was no discussion, you know? It didn't seem to have grandfathering in it, maybe I just missed it, so.
Is that something you can address, John?
Yeah, that, that issue would come up in front of the Planning Commission. I think that's an issue they need to address. What this says about grandfathering, and it doesn't have a specific period, I'm looking for it, on page five, top of page five of this ordinance, where it says non-applicability, it says, "The requirements of this section shall not apply to outdoor lighting installations operating before the effective date of this section, except for any lighting installation that creates a safety hazard or nuisance as deemed by the township." So, that.
So, I guess I meant a schedule under which grandfathering would be phased out.
Yeah, there's nothing, there's nothing like that in there, but that, that addresses, you know, existing lights, because any property owner is going to take the position that they're grandfathered in, regardless of what other municipalities have done. They will take that position. And then, if we're going to have a stringent grandfathering provision, and people aren't going to just comply, you know, the Board has to consider, how do we make them comply? So, now, you're talking about litigating lights all over this community with school districts, universities, large companies. So, it's easy to say, give them a one-year grandfather period, and think that that's actually going to happen overnight. It won't happen overnight. So, that's a discussion for, really, the Planning Commission, and ultimately, it's got to come back to the Board. But the way it is now, if it's a safety or nuisance problem, lighting situation, then the township can make that decision and force compliance with this, or at least correction of that. But there's no specific schedule for grandfathering here. But it's an important issue, and it's a legal issue. You know, it's, I don't know of any lighting grandfathering cases in this state, but I'm sure there are some somewhere. But I think, you know, in terms of grandfathering and compliance, you still have to look at, what is the health, safety, and welfare aspect that creates, that, that light is, you know, off-site nuisance types of impacts? You know, not an arbitrary, you got to be in compliance within a year, or you got to be in compliance with two years. Because compliance means, I mean, it may, there may not, may not be a problem light, it just may be, you got to put a different kind of standard up, or a different type of, reduce your spill off of your property by a few feet. So, it's, that's going to be a tough issue, but the Planning Commission and, you know, can, can deal with that, and that's something that the folks that are interested in, you know, a stringent grandfathering provision can bring that to the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any additional public comment to the motion on the floor? All right. All those in favor of sending the comprehensive lighting ordinance to the Planning Commission for refinement and coming, before it comes back to us, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven, nothing. All right. Discussion and possible motion to authorize John Rice to attend December 20th, 2018 zoning hearing board meeting to oppose the following. Do I need to read Appeal Number 3029, applicant is Villanova University. Commissioner Farhi, you requested this. Do you want to go ahead and discuss, or?
Sure. I'll just be brief. So, we'd like to thank all the residents for hanging out till 10:45, waiting for this. And this comes back to the nuisance light. So, I think the best thing that I can do is just let them speak, because everyone knows my opinion on nuisance lighting. So, I would definitely like to hear from them, and then, see if we can get the votes to send John Rice to advocate for our Ward 7 and residents that feel that there is a significant amount of light pollution coming from the university.
Does, does anyone, so do you object if we, first, I'll call to see if there's any commissioner discussion, and then, we can go ahead and make a motion? So, is there any commissioner discussion to this?
Well, I think that, in addition to just saying we'd like John to go, we would have to give him some direction on what to do when he gets there. My understanding is that the direction that you would request, and we've obviously spoken, and I, I agree with you, is that there's an existing ZHB decision that puts, puts out the conditions under which the lights are to be used. There is a conflicting 2006 resolution from a prior Board of Commissioners, that the 2006 resolution does not preclude enforcement of the ZHB decision, that to the extent that there's a distinction between the two of them, the ZHB decision takes precedence, because of course, this Board doesn't have the authority to change, to grant waivers from the zoning ordinance, and that we would like the ZHB to enforce the 1980 decision. Is that what you're asking for?
Correct. I would also like to see that, was it 2006-05 be rescinded, if possible? So, I know that, I spoke with John, John said that would be more difficult, but I would like to see one set rule going forward. My own personal opinion would be to see, again, their variance get denied, and then, Villanova would have to negotiate with the residents for a whole new plan, a plan that's updated, not from 1980, but from, hopefully, 2019, and the residents will know, and we can get input and work together.
So, one of the questions that I actually have for the residents, and I'd be interested in their comments if they're going to speak, is, I've spoken with some of the people at Villanova, and they've asked what the township's appetite would be by way of compromise if we were to allow them to turn the lights on earlier, not later. So, the 1980 decision is that the lights go off, it's 9:30, right?
No, 10:00. The 1980 is six to 10:00.
9:30 is the, okay.
Monday to Thursday.
So, the request the, the college made was, it gets dark before 6:00 PM, so, could we turn the lights on at 4:00 PM?
Sure.
And I just don't have a, I don't have a feel for how the residents.
I think, I think the residents, that's not the issue, the residents.
It's the late at night.
Yeah, the residents that I, from what I know, from what they've told me, is that if it's 10:30, then it's 10:38. If there's an event at the pavilion and, and basketball game, and it's a late game, goes into overtime, and it gets out at 11:30, they may stay on until 12:30, and they use it as security lights. So, I think earlier, 4 o'clock, I don't think that's going to affect anybody. I think it's, later on, it's, anytime after 9:00, 9:30 at the latest. I think that's kind of where the, that's at least what I think the appetite, where the cutoff is. But that's why I would love to hear from the, the neighbors, to hear what they have to say.
So, before we do that, let's, do we want to go ahead and make a motion? Is there a motion, can I get a motion to approve authorizing John Rice to attend the December 20th, 2018 zoning hearing board meeting to oppose Appeal Number 3029 from Villanova University?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right. So, is there any additional commissioner discussion on this? The motion on the floor.
I have a couple of questions for Bob. Bob, what's the current agreement that you have with Villanova?
What we've spoke about is lights going off at 9:30 moving forward, and they said that they would at 9:25 look to try to get this, these turned off, but 9:30 would be the extent.
So, is there any possibility in this, if we move forward, that it has the opposite effect, and Villanova could have the lights on longer? If they argue their position?
Well, I think the, the concern would be, is if we would honor their current, the current agreement, I think, and I think that's what Sean's referring to, they would be allowed to keep at least a portion of the lights on up until midnight. So, it would actually.
That's the 2006 resolution, where they can keep it on up until midnight, but that would have to be not at 100%, either be at like 30 or 50.
Correct, but it would be, but you'd have at least illumination, and given the lights that, I think what John found out, they're original lights that don't have any spill requirements or anything else to them, so they illuminate more, even at that, you'd still would have these lights on. And as Sean, I know, we've shared emails, when there's a fog that sits in at night, it really brightens up. So, I think at even 30%, you're still going to brighten that up through midnight. That, so I think that's kind of.
And, well, the current, the current standards, the current agreement, don't they, don't they half-power them at some point anyway? At 9:00 or 9:30?
I think what we have is, I believe, if we go up to the current one, I believe it does have a strike point, that they have to reduce it down. But I would say that working with them, trying to get this down, especially given the violation notices of the past, is to try to work with them, to try to get it down to 9:30 and keep it to 9:30, and then restrict morning hours, too, because I know there've been some concerns with, early on, at 4:00 AM, when there's an event or so, to try to squeeze that down. And I think there was one event that came up, I believe it was Special Olympics, in which they did hold off on the lights from what they wanted to try to do.
Okay. And final question, has the township ever reached out to Villanova and asked them, asked them to keep the lights on during an evening sporting event, so those streets are lit for safety reasons when pedestrians walk home?
In my opinion, I think it's, it's good on those certain event nights where there are large crowds, and you have people coming in from out of state, out of the area, that I think for safety, because you I think for safety, because you do have a lot of vehicles that do park in the neighborhoods. Even though we've restricted some on, I believe it would be the south side of Lancaster Avenue, they cannot park in that area. But there are areas where you will get people from out of state who are going to find any parking spot they can. And not only that, but you also have students walking back as well as residents too that it's a good idea. I think that during those few events where you have large crowds, which we'll call it the way it is, men's basketball is where the crowds come in. No offense to any other sport, but that's who brings in the sellout crowds. That it is good for security and safety purposes, especially when you have parking areas, parking lots where people are only going with limited lighting in some of those areas.
I guess my question there is Villanova's not completely, I mean, Villanova's not the blame on that, has the township reached out and asked for that for safety reasons?
I would believe in the past we have asked that they do keep lights on.
Thanks, Bob.
Any additional commissioner comment to the motion on the floor? All right, any staff comment? All right, first, I think I need to get a, well, let's do a public comment and we'll see if we need to extend. Go ahead. Is there public comment?
Yeah, my name is Martin Caulfield. As far as I'm concerned, anyone who has lights in Radnor Township that do not extend beyond their property or cause a nuisance can have them on 24/7. I think your focus on whether it's 9:30, 10:00 or whatever is the wrong item here. The item is the pollution into the neighborhoods. Whether that be at 5:00 in the afternoon, 7:00 in the afternoon, or 4:00 in the morning, it doesn't matter. Okay? It's that it exists is the problem, not the time. We don't know what everybody's schedules are. In my neighborhood, I live on that south side neighborhood where you put up the barriers. There are approximately 40 to 45 elementary school children getting on the Radnor bus in the morning. My guess is 50% of them are in bed by 9:30. Okay? I went around to some of the neighbors that have younger children and they explained how they have put shades or shutters interior on the, inside their homes to stop the light problem. We talk about the light problem. My question to Villanova is, have they ever come out into the neighborhoods to see the pollution that they're putting into the neighborhood? Or do they stay within the four walls of their campus and ignore it? And any other institution or businesses doing the same thing? It's not an issue of the lights being on, it's the issue of the lights coming into the neighborhood, if that makes sense, okay? It's a big difference to me. I don't care when they're on. They are on, I was shocked to hear 6:00 PM is when they're allowed to turn it on? Is that what I just heard? As part of the deal? Those lights are on at noon. If they want to waste their money having it on at noon, let them have it on. They're on different times of the day, not just at night. They need to wake up. I mentioned that in the very first time I spoke to this board about this lighting, probably about a month ago or so. So I went back online, and I'm not a subject matter expert, but when you Google, how much does it cost to light a facility with today's technology? And the answer comes back between $200,000 and $650,000 bucks depending on what your infrastructure is. My guess is this is not a big ordeal to them from a budget standpoint, or it's maybe other places that have this lighting. Okay, to have 40 or 38-year-old lighting fixtures up there and having them replaced with current technology, they might be getting their money back in five years, especially if they're only spending 200 grand for it. Neshamani High School, I gave as an example. Neshamani High School apparently went and secured money from different people or different groups to support reducing consumption for, of electricity for lighting. So has Villanova or any of these other institutions gone to PICO to find out, will they help them foot the bill? So I think you have to get off this idea of time of the day. It's stop it. Stop it from leaving their property. That's the most important thing. Has nothing to do with time of the day. We don't know if somebody wants to sleep till 11:30 in the morning because they work until 2:00 in the morning. And they're not here talking to you, right? Because they're working right now or whatever. The issue is stop it. And the technology is out there today to stop the pollution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
For, can we call for an extension?
Well, let's see if it's just Anna Marie you may.
Anna Marie Hessman, Old Oaks neighborhood. I was reading through the packet and the thing that I guess you're talking about authorizing someone to oppose, there was like a cover sheet and then there was the 1980 appeal and then nothing else. But in the cover sheet, it mentioned the 1980 thing and the 2006 thing. So I feel like the packet didn't have all the information. I'm not, I'm a little confused by the packet. That's my first comment. But reading over the 1980 ordinance or appeal, which I had not previously seen, a few things leaped out at me. One was how significantly the schedule has crept over time. And, you know, we're talking about the schedule going back for this hour, that hour, and stuff like that. And there was a commitment made that is not part of the discussion, but I believe it was attached to part of the CICD about when they would turn off the stadium lights after the 2012 incidents with leaving them on all night and stuff like that. So I have a concern that the schedule keeps creeping around. And also in the 1980 document, you can see assertions about that the lights will never be a nuisance to the neighborhood and that they'll only be pleasant and all these like pie in the sky things that are really not true. And there are people who like the lights who don't actually have them cast into their bedrooms of their homes. And that's true. But those people don't have them in the bedrooms of their homes. And that's an important thing for everybody to bear in mind is that the people who are most directly affected are the ones you should be thinking about the most when you make these decisions. With regard to public safety, if we need better lighting along Lancaster Avenue, there are some malfunctioning streetlights. The streetlights are all very old. If we need better lighting for people to walk home, then we need better lighting for people to walk home. That's not the same thing as lighting up people's bedrooms and the stadium. So I ask you to take that under consideration throughout this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna Marie. Can I first get a motion? Can I have a motion to extend for 15 minutes, please?
So moved.
Can I get a second? All those in favor of extending for 15 minutes? Aye. Hey, motion, motion passes five to two? Okay.
Good evening and I promise that I will be as brief as possible. My name is Tim Frye. I'm a resident of Ward Seven. I've been living in Radnor more or less for the past 10 years now, for the past three years in Ward Seven. One of the things that I've noted here tonight is a comment about neighbors and neighborhood, and that's one of the sense, the feelings that I get as being a part of Ward Seven. I, I'll be honest, I only really started to pay attention really to Radnor Township and the politics of Radnor Township and the workings of this board last year when, when Ward Seven lost its representation. I took it upon myself to try to become more informed and understand what was going on in Radnor and the issues that were germane to Ward Seven. And I joined a board and now, this is the first time that I've spoken to the board and I'm doing it because I feel like there's been a lack of representation for Ward Seven. We're looking here at a situation, Radnor, it, the situation with Villanova is not new. Villanova is not new to Radnor. It's hard to find an institution in Radnor that's been here longer. The issue with the lights is not new. And it sounds like we're here because somebody finally started to pay attention and to enforce an agreement that was maybe put into an email back in 2012 rather than being diligent and keeping on this issue and trying to represent these individuals. Thankfully, my house is far enough that we only see the lights when it's foggy. We don't have the lights coming into our room and harassing our children as they're trying to sleep. And so I just, Commissioner Larkin mentioned the communications with Villanova, and I feel like this is an issue that needs to have a better involvement. And Roberta, she's my neighbor, and she mentioned that she's going to be putting together some type of meeting in February. And I think that is the forum where this type of issue can actually be resolved once and for all. Radnor and Villanova, they need to work together. They can't be separate here. We talked about lighting on the streets. I mean, one of the big problems is the fact that the sidewalks in the streets right there on Lancaster Avenue from Barclay clone down, it's dark and dangerous. Well, what's right next to that is Villanova. We need to have cooperation with Villanova. We need to reach out with Villanova. And look, Villanova is no saint by any means. I'm still paying off my student loans to them and will be until my son is a sophomore in college. But one of the things that I've noted in the past year as I've started and had an opportunity to come to these meetings and witness what's going on, is that there's been disharmony on the board, that there's been a lack of respect. And I feel like this is something that needs to be remedied because if we go into types of conversations with Villanova and others that we need to cooperate with and we disregard them, we disrespect them, we walk away, we start making accusations about bad faith dealings, that doesn't get resolution. And that's what my neighbors are asking for. They're sitting there with lights coming into their houses with their children trying to sleep. And so I implore the board, I almost said court, that's a trade of habit, but I implore the board to take consideration of this, to give it the deference that it deserves because it needs to be fixed. And the fix that needs to happen is to include all the parties in the neighborhood. And then that's what we're looking at here. It's my, my belief that Radnor is a community of neighbors. And if we're going to be neighbors, we need to be respectful of each other. We need to work together. And I hope that everyone will. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for waiting all evening. Are there any additional, please?
Jane Gally again, Ward Seven. I know you all know where I stand on this. I mean, I'm on the care committee, which has watched over Villanova as they've built their new facilities. I will say that when they wanted to build more dorms in the south campus, they said, oh yeah, we're going to have all of us seniors living in there. You'll get them out of the neighborhoods. Well, that didn't really work. Then they built west campus. Oh, no, no, that's where all our seniors are going because we're going to get them out of the neighborhood. Sure. So now they're building 1,135 giant dorms where all the seniors are going to live and get out of the neighborhoods. We'll see. But anyway, so over time, I guess that's where I come from. I've lived in my neighborhood long enough that I have watched promises made and promises not kept, or creeping, you know, issues come up that I'm not, I'm very skeptical of what Villanova says. I mean, because we've tried to be good neighbors, we've tried to, you know, talk with them. And I remember when we were doing the dorms for the CICD, the township, the police department, the neighbors, had a list of 60 items that they were hoping that Villanova would agree to as they did, went through their specific, which was of course against the law, but anyway, zoning that they got specifically for them. And they, they gave us exactly zero. Zero, including turnings at the corner so that we wouldn't have people, you know, huge trucks that are going to be delivering to these buildings now. We'll see how Ethan manages that. All along, so are we skeptical that they'll, they'll do something about this? 1980, whatever it was for that zoning board, they were supposed to have the lights on Monday through Thursday. Well, they're not on Monday through Thursday, they're on pretty much all the time. So that's the skepticism. And I think that this is where, even as Rich was saying, if we're going to have, if we're going to have a little thing on the, an ordinance on the, on the board, we, we need to abide by it. Otherwise, get rid of it. And that's sort of where I am, that if we have zoning laws for lighting, for what have you, or we have none for lighting, and as time has gone on, things are getting brighter and brighter. I mean, when I moved in here and if someone tells me one more time, well, you moved next to a, to a university, what did you expect? Well, when I moved in, it was a college and it was only men. So like it was tiny little inside their own little thing. They didn't have big, huge hoo-ha, they didn't have lights, they didn't have cameras, they had nothing. I mean, it was a small, little college. So don't tell me, you know, that, oh, well, you knew what you were getting into. No, I was here first. Obviously not in 1847, but whatever. I mean, that, that which I moved into was a lot less than what I've had to deal with along the way. So I'm just saying, this, I think Mr. Rice should go and, you know, let them abide by what they, they agree, they've agreed to over and over again. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Is there any additional public comment?
Sure. Can I make two follow-up comments?
We can. I was going to call the vote.
So just to, just to touch base, Rich and I, and I know Lisa, you, we went to a Villanova meeting. Rich, I remember you asked a question. You said, can you turn the backs, turn the lights back to 9:30? And the answer was, I don't believe we can. And it was actually quoted in a Linda Stein article. That's the, you know, that's the first and most important thing. The other thing too is, you know, when it comes to grandfather, 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 the, the first home, and I did a little bit of research, that was built on Barley Cone, was built in 1941. The lights didn't come on until 1980. I think the neighbors are 39 years grandfathered prior. So I think that's important for, for everybody to know.
All right, I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor of sending, authorizing John Rice to attend the December 20th, 2018 zoning hearing board meeting to oppose appeal number 3029 from Villanova University, please indicate by saying aye. Aye? All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes five to two. Okay. Are there any announcements, Parks and Rad, Personnel, Personnel Administration, Public Safety, Library, Public Health? We will, nope. All right, final public comment. Is there any public comment? All right, then may I get a motion to adjourn? May I get a second? All those in favor? Aye. Good evening. Thank you very much.